Sure, so night two of your deliberations. We finished up work on the maps yesterday and we appreciate all of your work and motions on that. And now we move into the elements of the comprehensive plan and there's a list. We provided an updated agenda for this evening. And a suggested order for taking the elements and any amendments to those elements that the commission wishes to make. We have staff with us both in person and online here as you work your way through this. The suggestion is to start with the transportation element. We have staff from Public Works here with me at the table. For each of these elements, we're happy to provide a overview, a summary of the amendments if the commission so desires. And we can pull up any notes or anything that that they that staff may want to utilize in providing a summary. Just like yesterday where we have the big screen over here and the ability to pull any number of things up, including the actual text of the elements and any other information that you want, we can do that pretty quickly. Otherwise, that's all I have for opening remarks. And as I said, if you want, you want to start with transportation and get a overview from Public Works. Can have Jay Larson and Nathan Howard do that.
So we gave a briefing August 22nd on the conference plan on the transportation element. And I just wanted to go over a few of those things that we talked about. We started with the GMA requirements and for the transportation element, there is an extensive amount of requirements, more so than most of the elements. So that's kind of why the T itself is so expansive. We also talked about how there was major reorganizations of the transportation element. So it looks very different from what it does today. And one of the big things was bringing in the policies which were in the general policy plan before and are now in the transportation element. And then a few major things we talked about, there was a significant focus on multimodal transportation, which included, you know, more robust planning around transit and active transportation, so bicycle and pedestrian, and emphasis on equity, safety, and climate change, of course. This TE does include a ambitious project list that, like the previous TE, focuses a lot on LOS issues. But it also focuses on intensifying the or investing in transportation in the areas that we are expecting intense land use in the urban core. So a big portion of that is focusing on transportation projects in that area. We also had to, because of this extensive project list, look at alternative ways that we can help fund the transportation projects. So this TE walks through a variety of options that we could increase the funding for transportation. During the public comment period and the public testimony, we of course heard significant comments about general congestion issues. And wanted to clarify that the transportation element is only one piece of solving that congestion issues. And it's really those major capital projects that address LOS, safety, access. But there are other portions of the county's operations that deal with congestion. So outside of the transportation element, we continue to address congestion with improving our operations. So like improving signals, we do traffic investigations, so go on to certain roadways and try to identify what the exact problem is. And of course, there's law enforcement that helps with that. So the T is only one portion of that congestion piece. We also did hear specific comments during public testimony on congested corridors. And those are things that Public Works is continuing to look at how we can address those beyond the major capital projects. And then finally, the last thing I want to say is due to the UGA amendments that were approved or recommended for approval last night, we are bringing in four additional projects into the TE. So those are the two intersection projects on 44, the 43rd and 45th extension, and then the two 40th street improvements. And those roughly are estimated to be about $20 million, so. And I think that's the bulk of it. And we're here to answer questions.
Well, that's good to hear, the last part there. Any discussion from fellow commissioners on transportation element? My thinking as we go forward tonight through these elements that each one probably deserves direct attention and not to try to group them, much as I'd like to do that. So my thinking is for each one of these elements that we have discussion and go through a formal vote process, if that's okay with you guys. So at this point in time, any discussion or emotion? I personally am impressed with the transportation plan. I'm sorry it has to reach out six years, but when you think about how much money gets spent, what are you supposed to do? It takes time to put together the funding and the grants and all that. So there's good reason for that, I understand. So any other discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the transportation element.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the transportation element. Does there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sheldon.
Sorry, second.
That's okay. Commissioner Sheldon gives us a second. Motion before us at this time to approve the transportation element as presented by staff, made by Commissioner Campbell, seconded by Commissioner Sheldon. When you're done there, Taylor, go ahead and call the call the roll.
Question?
Yes, sir.
In a in a policy to a 2-8-10, eventually can can it be worked with to have as a speed limit, safety on county roads? You know, if we could maybe push that for maybe within two years? Because I sometimes I have feeling that when we do this, we add a wish list to it and it never gets done.
Can you repeat that? The policy number?
Okay, the policy 2.8-10, I don't think there was one there. But, you know, we have, a lot of places have speed safety issues. And 45 miles an hour isn't just quite the correct way of going through residentially areas. If we could, is there a committee or someone? I'm working on, as this is, as this is a goal of being able to work on on this, the transportation element, to be able to work on some sort of a speed control on roads.
And I think the commissioner is wanting to add, is that correct?
Yes.
An additional policy?
Yes.
So.
Would we have to say amendment on that one? I didn't, going through the rules on this one, it's gonna be more complicated as we go further. There's gonna be little spots in everyone's wish list.
Yeah, so if from a procedural standpoint, yes, you have a motion on the floor. And you, if you want to introduce an amendment to that, to that main motion, you can certainly introduce an amendment, see if there's a second, have discussion, then take a vote on that amendment. There may be other amendments that other commissioners wish to move, whether it's on the transportation element or other elements as we go through this evening. So this would be the point in time if you wanted to move to make an amendment to the transportation.
To to on the policy and to to that, you guys would have to come up with the numbers yourself. On on a, working on speed safety on county roads, but try to do this within two years. Because I just know that's not gonna happen overnight.
So we have an amendment to the main motion. And restate, Ray, the the critical part here.
To work on speed limits and transportation for safety?
Is that worded comfortably for you? Limits for safety was made within two years, very good point. A motion to amend the main motion to work on speed limits for safety to be made within two years was made by Commissioner Sheldon. Do we have a second on this? Do we have a second on? Go ahead. Commissioner Campbell, was that a was that a second?
It is a second.
Okay, very good. Any discussion on the amendment to the main motion?
I mean, I don't know enough about how s- speed limits are adjusted or made within county roads on those arterials or different levels of roads. And obviously, safety is always a big concern for those that are walking or even driving on those roads. So is this a an appropriate amendment and within the jurisdiction of the transportation element?
So, yeah, it's within the jurisdiction of the transportation element. We have, we use county, national standards to set speed limits. Normally on county roads, the speed limit has been 35 miles an hour. But in our or out in rural areas or more rural areas, it's higher. Now, as we get into areas that have become more urbanized, that are more like a city, in some locations, that those speed limits have been lower. But we have made a significant effort over the last two years to be doing traffic safety plans. And those traffic safety plans are about operations and how can we design intersections to be more safe? But they're also about techniques that we can use. And one of those techniques are lowering speed limits and we are looking at that right now. So it is, it fits well within the types of things that Public Works is doing right now. You were saying that it might be a different location where we safely located in the policies. And that might be a different number of where it would sit better.
Yeah, under objective TR 2B is really where we talk about safety. And it does talk about ways that we want to enhance and evaluate safety. It's also worth noting that new policy 2B3 is about our work, sorry, I could zoom in. And I guess I'm not sharing for anyone online. Oh, well then, there we go. But the county is currently in the process of, I'm developing a road safety plan, which does address issues related to speed limits. And so that's currently in the works and hoping to get a draft in the next few years. And developing a road safety program, which is 2B4, which we're also working on. So the this, although it's not inappropriate to include measures for lowering speed limits, these two policies are getting towards that of trying to get the county to do something. And that really makes sense in a road safety plan through a road safety program.
Commissioner Sheldon, you'd be happy to have it placed wherever it's most appropriate. I also think it's an effect on climate change, you know, reducing speed limits. Many jurisdictions have lowered speed limits to reduce use of gas.
I don't think my issue is where it's placed, as long as we're working on it. If if we don't set a limit, it, we just let it go away, it just fades away. And my wife is here, she could testify it's, sometimes it's roll the dice if we're gonna move on to Marine Drive. If we're gonna use the light or we're in a hurry, we're gonna go up there and where it's a corner. But there's a lot of people that have, a lot of people with elders, they're getting to that issue. And I know it's other places in the county because as we grow, speeds, desire and limits are changing. And if we don't look at those, we might, there'll be accidents down the road as we're growing. 10 years is a long time.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheldon. Any other discussion? Yes.
You think maybe we should add?
Perhaps reword the, reword the the motion to the main motion. Want to reword it?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. Dive in.
Whatever you said, I knew this was gonna be a hard night because.
Just insert it in there.
Yes, yeah.
Let's just get the language.
Yeah.
Yes, that was not working. Okay, let's take this one away. Hide that.
To the main motion to TR, so how about scratch that, TR policy 2B3, main motion to review the counties or the road safety plan every two years? I, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, including speed limits.
Makes sense to say to review the road safety plan, speed limits every two years?
I'm just reading what 2B3 is, and it says, implement the county's road safety plan that identifies and evaluates potential safety deficiencies in the transportation system, guides countermeasures, and incorporates best practices for future transportation projects. So somewhere their language needs to just be added, this will be evaluated every two years and updated. I don't know how else to. Sure, I don't know what else to, I don't know how to amend it without. Okay.
And you could write at the end a limit on the first one, you could say using TR policy 2B3 to work on speed limits for safety to be reviewed every two years. And this, go ahead.
Can you just scratch the first, yeah, every two year, exactly, perfect. There you go.
And Commissioner Sheldon, are you okay with the change to the amendment to the main motion? This this current wording?
Of course.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? Okay. Commissioner Campbell, you seconded, are you okay with it? Okay, any other discussion? We'll take a vote. Yes, this is the the amendment to the main motion. We'll vote on that first and get that done. Taylor, go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Sheriff Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
No.
And Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
I count six in favor, one against. This motion passes. And this is the amendment to the main motion, which has now been approved and that becomes a part of the main motion. A motion to approve the transportation element as presented by staff was made by Commissioner Campbell, seconded by Commissioner Sheldon, as amended. Any discussion? Taylor, go ahead and take the vote.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Sheriff Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
And Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
Vote approving transportation element. Motion as amended has been completed and thank you very much, transportation staff. Great job. And thank you, Commissioner Sheldon. Next element before us, this is number two, is the park and recreation element.
I will have Carol Oles from Parks come up here as we do a little seat change. And it would be safe to assume that the commission would like an overview of amendments. Okay, I see heads nods. Let Carol give a little overview of.
This is hard, yeah, sorry. Okay, came straight here from another meeting, so I missed the first little intro here. You guys are so efficient this evening. The biggest changes in the park and recreation element are that we reorganized the narrative content around nine goals. We updated the level of service methodology, including adding a new level of service for urban open space and preserve acres. And we removed waterfront miles from the level of service method metrics. And we are also allowing, through this amendment process, to allow all park properties, including special use and open space preserve properties to qualify as necessary to support development and therefore allow any type of park classification to feature the facilities that are required to meet our demand and level of service minimum standards and potentially incorporate those park types into our impact fee code amendments in the future. Yeah, that's the biggest difference for us. We used equity analysis on our buffers to try to identify areas that need future parks, focusing on new policies that are required to provide parks in urban unincorporated areas. So our mapping shows areas that we intend to prioritize as feasible in our future. The parks element is required to have a six-year budget with our capital facilities, programming, and CIP update that we do through the annual budget. And we're continuing to meet those needs. Big focus of the plan this year is trails, regional trails updates, which has a little overlap with the public works or the transportation element. But those are the big changes for us. Parks is now part of DCNR, which for the county. So it gives us more of a sustainability overview. And I, outside of the park element, have been working on those urban tree policies and that kind of thing. So we see a lot of overlap between the parks element and many other elements. But you've seen the plan as it is, looks a cute little hundred pages for everybody to read. But mostly, those are the main changes. How many questions?
Will you, will parks be the purveyor then, generally speaking, of the tree canopy questions?
That is not known at this time, but I have heard that the depart, not parks, but Department of Conservation and Natural Resources would take a role in that.
Okay.
But I don't think, especially as part of the comprehensive plan process, that the implementation is quite known. But that was part of the memo, I think, that Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, which houses parks, swim, surface water management, Office of Energy and Sustainability, and Office of Agriculture, that department.
Okay, thanks, Carol. Any discussion on the parks element? Commissioner Sheldon?
Just the define recreation.
Define it?
Yes.
Oh, hmm. We deleted our definition section. Let's refer to a previous section of the comp plan, I think. I think it's a broad definition for the parks and recreation division for us. Park lands in the comprehensive plan is a specific capacity element as part of the capital facilities planning and GMA requirements. Park lands and recreation then for us, and in this element, I would say is, you know, people recreating on those park lands and within the county. So whether they do that for health, for, you know, as a, you know, an option or as a requirement in their lives, I mean, I think it's a pretty big.
Let me help you a little bit.
Yeah, what do you think?
Are you talking like baseball fields, soccer fields as we grow? We we're, we're growing so fast that we're not adding recreation for the children or adults?
Yeah, great. We do have a certain level, a number of types of amenities that we do provide as far as we provide active amenities and passive amenities. So those, I think, fall into this more specific maybe question of what kind of recreational amenities do we provide? So active amenities are things like ballparks, facilities, picnic shelters, like just more intensively used on the land. And then passive facilities are like picnicking with no shelter where you're like, um, you know, throw out a blanket. And so, yeah, it includes those.
So I left my iPad home. My wife's gonna be mad because I was supposed to be organized. Where where would you, on there, where would you, the definition of sports and? Is there, because I, I didn't see one, I just saw recreation.
Yeah. I would say there's no definition of sports and, oh, gosh. There is a definition of active and passive amenities because we do count those and, you know, we're required to have a certain number for our level of service and impact fees. So active recreation amenities generally promote elevated heart rate, including ballfields, sports courts, playgrounds, and equestrian facilities. And passive recreations do not promote elevated heart rate, including picnic facilities, off-leash dog areas, amphitheaters, community gardens. Internal park footpath trails are also considered passive facilities, although it's acknowledged that the use of trails can promote an increased heart rate. And then I think right down here, okay, neighborhood parks, these are our types of parks. But I'm gonna go to another section that counts how many active facilities we have right now that we're providing. It's not in our level of this service section. Here we go. So as far as planning for how many sports courts in the future that we're gonna be providing, this is the measure that has not, the number has not changed in this. The adopted 2015 comp plan chose these numbers here. So one facility per 3,250 people for active recreation facility. So that includes, you know, soccer fields and whatnot.
Under the years, just a, just a, the CPI, did I say that right?
CIP.
CIP, did you include any? Or the next, for the next six years?
Yes, um, only the amount that we're required to include to meet the level of need for the for the next six years. So it's not in this plan because this is the 20-year, but the same. So this is like in, within the next 20 years, we need to provide 21 additional active facilities, seven additional passive recreation facilities. This is why we had to delete waterfront because we can't find eight more miles of waterfront to provide. But we would be creating 70 more campsites and 200 more parking spaces. And that would meet the demand anticipated by the population growth for the next 20 years. And now the CIP, which I don't have that memorized, but that six year has the same chart but for six years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheldon. Any other discussion at this time? Thank you, Commissioner Sheldon. Any other discussion at this time? Okay.
Motion to approve person, Parks and Recreation Element?
Second.
Okay, thanks Ray. We have a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation Element by Commissioner Sheldon. Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Campbell. And any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I think we can take a vote. Uh, go ahead, Taylor. Let's take the vote, uh, roll call. Good job, Carol. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nammella?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Parks and Recreation is done, and we move to number three, Capital Facilities and Utilities Element.
So Eileen Canola come up and uh we'll have her go through a overview of the cap facilities and utilities element.
Good evening. Sorry about that. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, Eileen Canola, um Planning, uh Planning and Development Services. Um, I will just provide an overview of the capital facility element. Um, uh, so the, this is a proposed repeal and replace uh from the 2015 capital facilities plan. So um the requirements are from the state is to have um level of service standards for all capital facilities and utilities necessary to support development. Um, to provide existing inventories, a forecast of future needs, and a funding mechanism. And the fund- funding mechanism is uh completed through the annual capital improvement program that we do for the county. We've relocated a lot of the policies um uh from the general policy plan into the capital facilities and utilities element. Uh, so the, uh, all the policies for the capital facilities, utilities, and essential public facilities have migrated from the general policy plan into the new capital facilities and utilities. And part of this update really focuses on consistency with the Vision 2050 for the new policies for public services as well as those um in the countywide planning policies. And the draft narrative of the capital facilities and utilities element demonstrates that consistency with the GMA requirements. It relates to the overall Vision twenty statement, uh Vision Statement for the 2024 Comprehensive Plan, in particular, the Public Services Section. And it demonstrates, as I mentioned before, consistency with uh the multi-county planning policies and the countywide planning policies. And it really provides context and updated information for each of the capital facilities and public services. Um, so this just goes over the fact that we've moved those, all those uh policies from um the general policy plan into this new um element. Uh, and in the background, uh, the purpose is really to ensure that we have those public facilities and utilities necessary to support development. And therefore, um, it really um supports and is coordinated with our doc- adopted growth targets as well as the land use element in the future land use map. So wherever we grow, we want to make sure that we have those services necessary to support that growth. And this is, these are the sources, uh Vision 2050 and the countywide planning policies, um and initial growth, growth targets and public input. And then also we all uh included uh for motion uh twenty-two zero nine five um new policies regarding broadband and telecommunications. So as I mentioned, uh, GMA Planning Goal twelve um requires um the county to ensure that those facilities and services that are necessary to support development are adequate to serve that development when it's necessary and ready for use. And this uh is a GMA requirement to what the capital facilities must entail. So it's an inventory of the existing capital facilities, the forecast of future needs. They propose locations, so those are the maps that are in the, the element. And there's a requirement to reassess the land use element if there's a prob- probable funding shortfall, or if there's, for any reason, we're not meeting those level of service standards. And that analysis happens um at this moment through, through the annual capital improvement program through a statement of assessment, which I think you guys just reviewed recently. And this is new, actually, um, this legislative session, it just requires us to, to make sure we have a good faith effort to reaching out to our public providers of utilities and um um capital facilities to ensure that we've made an effort to get all that new information and data to make sure that we are um have the most up-to-date information in our element. And this is the one for the utilities uh element. Um, our capital facilities and utilities element, uh, we identify those public services necessary to support development. Um, such as public transportation, parks, water, sewer, uh fire service, electric power, and public schools. So that's all included. And most of the information has been updated in this element, except for public schools, in which case we'll be doing that next year. And it'll be incorporated um uh into this new element during the county council review. So I'm just gonna go through, th- this was just the, the slides that we went through, the briefing, so I just want to make sure that I touch on most of the information. Um, but it, for public participation, uh, we went through the SEPA scoping. Uh, we uh had updates through our county website and newsletters. We participated in um community engagement throughout the county. And we really met one-on-one with a lot of the service providers in the southwest urban growth area, just to ensure that, because that's where a lot of the growth areas happening, as you'll hear from Matt um in the urban core sub-area plan element. So we did do a lot of outreach in general through the comprehensive plan update, but also in particular for this element. Um, this just is going through, um, you know, the service transportation, of course, and the parks element are, are um referenced in the capital facilities and utilities element, but they're a separate entity. Uh, this includes surface water management, solid waste, um and other county um provided facilities and services. Um, and then our external providers, public schools, as I mentioned, will be updated next, next year. Fire protection services, essential public facilities, public water, public wastewater collection treatment. And the utilities are electric power, natural gas, and the new broadband section. And that just covers what we've done. Of course, the annual or the six, county six-year capital improvement program is part of our uh capital facilities and utilities element. And hazard mitigation planning is included, uh, because it really is important to ensure that our uh facilities and services are thinking about any potential hazards, including climate change, um, in terms of serving our growth. And any questions? I'm here, obviously, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Eileen. It's almost staggering how much goes into this. It's amazing you can do it.
Well, I had a lot of help.
Yeah. It's quite a staff, yes. Any discussion on capital facilities and utilities?
Of course.
Commissioner Sheldon?
When I was, when I was looking through it, um, when I read the paper yesterday, the other day, um, seems that we don't have, we have a recycling, but do we even actually have a staff to keep the numbers of the recycling that goes on in this county?
We do. We have our, our solid waste division of um the Department of, of Public Works. Um, they have, I mean, they're managing a lot of our waste collection, and um they do have some numbers in terms of recycling. We don't, as a county, recycle ourselves, but uh we contract with a lot of services, you probably know, um in the county to, for the collection and um um and the recycling that happens. And at this moment, um, there is a new legislation that was passed to try to divert organics from the waste, from the waste stream as well. So that's an ongoing process. Um, I think solid waste is looking for a potential location to cite those facilities at this time.
Any other questions at this time or discussion? I'd love to see organics removed. I'm not sure how we're gonna do it. That's a big deal. That's, that's methane. Any other discussion before we take a vote? Do I hear a motion?
It's just the vice chair's responsibility to make motions, but I, I would.
It's fine.
I, I move that we approve the capital facilities and utilities element, including broadband policies.
Commissioner Campbell moves to approve as written.
Second.
And we have a second from Commissioner Ash. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, more?
Question? Sorry, I don't have an iPad. Um, I'm funding on, I could be in the wrong, I could be in the wrong element. It's known to be happened. Um, we had Shell to, um, instead of two on hybrid buses throughout the county. Am I in the right area?
I think that might be the transportation element. Is that something?
Is it a transportation? Okay. But I thought I saw it in the, but.
Sure.
So the transit issues that deal with, or then the comprehensive plan are all in the transportation element. Uh, we don't talk a lot about hybrid buses in there. Um, you might have seen that Community Transit just came out with their long-range plan where they talk extensively about the use of hybrid buses. But we refer mainly to the transit routes that um are coming out of Community Transit's planning, and then we refer back a lot to the work that they're doing.
Thanks, Jay. Appreciate that. You okay with that, Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So at this time, we have a main motion before us pending a vote. Motion made to approve capital facilities plan as written. Any discussion? Okay, Taylor, go ahead and take the roll.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Nammella?
Yes.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, capital facilities, utilities element passes unanimously. Thank you, Planning Commission and staff. Next item, Population and Employment Element. Mr. Steve Toy.
Good evening. Uh, Steve Toy with Planning and Development Services, and um I'll uh just briefly uh indicate purpose of the Population Employment Element and what some of the changes are that are in the strikeout underlined version, uh, part of your agenda packet. So the Population Employment Element, I briefed you uh back in March of this year on um uh, uh, the major changes that uh were entailed in this comp plan update. And then David Killenstad briefed you uh in September on uh modifications to the proposed uh element. At that time, uh, there were just a couple of minor ones. So what the Population Employment Element uh accomplishes uh in the uh county's comprehensive plan is to establish the goals, objectives, and policies for allocating the future growth to different parts of the county that we're planning for. Provides for that distribution, uh, most of the growth going into the urban areas of the county. So we work with the cities to reflect the city versus the urban unincorporated portions, uh, and what they would be accommodating. It's guided of, its guidance over a twenty-year planning period, uh, that the Growth Management Act uh requires that we plan for, and it follows a re- number of requirements established by the Growth Management Act itself, uh, the PSRC's Vision 2050 Regional Plan, our countywide pl- planning policies um for how to distribute growth to different areas of the county. There's a, uh, also policies that provide a direction for uh reconciling those growth targets based on new information after all the comp plan updates are accomplished by the end of next year, including the twenty different, different cities along with the counties, and then how to adjust those targets over time. So um, looking at the uh, the overall set of changes, uh, strikeout and underscore version of the uh element. Um, the amendments do uh look at the next twenty-year period and establish where growth is uh encouraged within the county, specifically urban areas being the primary emphasis, and where growth is discouraged over the next twenty years. Policy direction is clearly established in the element, uh, uh, following Vision 2050's prioritization of allocation of growth to areas uh with or near centers, um, and high-capacity transit that are affiliated uh for annexation eventually to cities. Um, and also uh to accomplish ways to support the jobs and housing balance and infill development within the urban growth area priorities of uh Vision 2050. Policy direction is also incorporated in the proposed changes to the element that reduces policy growth in rural areas, again, consistent with Vision 2050. So this is the main, uh, those are the main uh changes that are being proposed in uh the Population and Employment Element for uh the comprehensive plan update. Um, and I'll open up to any questions or discussion.
Thanks, Steve. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Steve. Um, I was noticing that you do have this reconciliation process, and obviously with the Buildable Lands Report and the allocations from Vision 2050, we have certain targets um within urban areas and rural areas. And I think there's been, at least in my estimation, struggling with getting the appropriate level of densities as we go within some of the, our lovely cities. Um, not to be named, but it's a challenge to get the densities that are necessary to really um achieve the full um requirements of the Vision 2050. My question is similar also with what we did last night. We added urban area and then therefore population recommendations to the county council. So in terms of reconciliation of amendments passed that may not then meet the targets, how does, how do you reconcile um both comprehensive plans within cities and then some additional um areas that we've added last night?
Uh, as far as the changes that last night, um, the Planning Commission recommended uh to the map, uh, those will be um, those will be developed as the process proceeds with the county council. Uh, consideration what the impact to the growth targets are. We have basically the bookends established in the growth distributions for alternative uh one, two, and three. Uh, you'll see in the, uh, the appendices to the EIS. Um, so we do have the, the, the range of what the growth allocations under one, two, and three look like, so we could basically uh, take those portions of alternative three that um, uh, that you recommended last night and, and adjust the uh, the growth targets accordingly. So that'll be the county's process as, as we work through to the county council, uh, to carry your recommendation forward. Uh, ultimately, when the county council takes action uh next year on um, uh, uh, on the growth targets that are uh in place for um Snohomish County, including, including the cities where about sixty-eight percent of the population growth is, is allocated to. So it's a considerable amount of question mark about what the cities are, are, are going to be working on here, uh, and accomplishing by the end of next year as well. Uh, but there will have to be a basically placeholders, a check-in next year. We already have that dialogue uh, that's scheduled for uh, uh, discussions with cities at the planning director level, uh, through the Planning Advisory Committee next year, so we can glean uh where they are in their comprehension. where they are in their comprehensive plan updates. They do have under Vision 2050, very ambitious growth assignments to the cities. Not just the unincorporated urban area with the light rail and high capacity transit communities being earmarked for a significant amount of growth, the cities as well. Most of the cities as well have a have a big challenge ahead of them. So we'll, we'll take a cut at where they are in their evaluation of their different alternatives. Next year and it'll be basically a based on the base best information available for these from cities at that time that county council would take action. On a on a growth distribution for the county. That's the importance of the reconciliation effort after the adoption of the plan next year because there may be some cities that maybe aren't able to adopt a comprehensive plan and zoning that would get them to the level of growth called for in the initial targets. So then Snohomish County tomorrow gets involved. In this case, it would be 2025 in reconciling differences. It will be a challenge. We've had it. We've had these challenges before in the last conference of plan update. City of Everett was really on the in the in the highlight for a significant amount of growth beyond what they had been planning for in previous comp plan update cycles, but with a lot of work on on the part of the city of Everett, they were able to demonstrate in their comprehensive plan how they would get to the level of growth called for in Vision 2040. So we do have a track record of having a lot of challenging issues that the cities have tackled in previous comp plan update efforts that do get reconciled post comp plan adoption and and hopefully we'll be able to match that same track record.
Are there carrots and sticks or I mean, like, okay, Everett, you're out of compliance with what your yearly amounts of density and zoning is supposed to be. Is it just, hey, we're taking note of that. I hope you can do better. Or is there some other thing that might be able to be coaxing them further?
In the case of the city of Everett, like Eileen Canola showed you the regional growth strategy allocations, the city of Everett is by itself in that categorization in the in the regional plan as the metropolitan city. So the amount of growth that's assigned to the city of Everett through our process is the same as what the regional plan calls for. So in the case of their consistency review and certification between the city of Everett and PSRC, that that's really a, that's really a critical piece that the Puget Sound Regional Council will be looking at for the city of Everett. Because it's spelled out clearly just for that. In the case of other cities like the core cities, there's, there's, that's another significant amount of growth, but it's two cities that that look at 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 distributing the core city growth in the regional plan, Bothell and Linwood. So there is some ability for those two jurisdictions to to look at options. There's more for high capacity transit communities. There's six. There, yeah, there's great map here. There's six cities that are part of the high capacity transit communities. Arlington, Marysville, Mill Creek, Malicteris, Edmonds, Mukleto, and then most of the unincorporated Southwest. They're in yellow because of the light rail line. So there is some ability to work if there are some shortfalls from cities in that category to possibly look at some adjustments. Again, it's unknown what level that might, if that's going to be needed at all, and if there are adjustments, what level would be needed? And it's, it's, it's a, it's a it's something that the county and the cities, as we work through this process have in the front of our minds because if there are major adjustments and it's a lot of additional work after our comp plan updates next year that we're going to try and avoid, avoid because, you know, complete your comp plan updates, there's probably not a lot of interest in revisiting some of the same issues through reconciliation. So hopefully we'll get most of them taken care of and only have less important ones to deal with during reconciliation.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions for Steve? At this time, any other discussion?
Motion to approve the population and employment.
Okay. Thank you. We have an emotion from Commissioner Sheldon to approve the population employment element as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campbell. Any discussion? A motion to approve the population element. And then that's also employment, yes, population employment element made by Commissioner Sheldon, seconded by Commissioner Ash. Taylor, go ahead and take the vote.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Second.
And Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Steve and commission. So we have a unanimous vote on population and employment for approval. Thank you.
Just a small point.
Yes, go ahead.
Commissioner Campbell was the second.
Thank you. Corrections to Commissioner Campbell on the second. Next item, economic development element.
And we have joining us online, Michael Saponero. Taylors, he moved over as a panelist.
Taylor, are you getting visual?
Yep, we could, we could see you, Michael.
Oh, great. And I'm going to ask one more favor from Taylor since I'm on Zoom. Taylor, if it's not in a motion, would you be able to add that? PowerPoint screen or should I?
I can pull it up.
Oh, that'd be great. I don't want to go into too much detail, but I have just a quick slide to anchor. Quick briefing on economic development, even though it's, it's nothing new from what you've seen last time in spring when I presented after Steve, but just as a quick refresh, I'll go over some of the main points of economic development and the changes to the chapter. Ah, great. Okay. Let me just go over a quick review. So I did the economic development chapter and after this, I'll go with the inter jurisdictional coordination chapter as well. But these updates were workshop with county staff from the PDS department and the executive office, business interests, the Snohomish County Arts Commission. Were made available to the public digitally. There was a fair amount of public response and they're all detailed in my staff report. All of the proposed updates were consistent with the G CPP, GPP and MPP policies. And they are mostly aligned along these themes. First one being comparative advantage, specialization and freight issues. The second one being creative place making and innovation. Third one being around sustainability, the emerging green industries. Fourth one being about economic resiliency. Fifth one about regulatory reform. Sixth one about workforce training. Seventh one about human services and childcare opportunities. And the eighth one was about displacement mitigation and diversity equity inclusion. And there is a list of definitions as well, at least provided in the staff report and there's a full list of all the individual amendments. I'd be happy to go over any details, but for now I just figured I'd leave it on an upper level overview briefing and just see if there's any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Michael. I could see a spanner night on this one. Any discussion or questions for Michael? Oh, we have him here. This is regarding economic development. Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to, oh, you changed the screen. Oh, it's the economic development. Element.
Can you still see me?
Yes.
Seconded, yes.
Any discussion on the motion? Did we get a second? Okay. Commissioner Ash was it? Very good. Okay, a motion to approve the economic development element was made by Commissioner Sheldon, seconded by Commissioner Ash. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Taylor, when you're done, go ahead and take the vote.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
We have unanimous approval of the economic development element. Thank you very much, Michael and fellow commissioners. Moving now to inter jurisdictional coordination element.
That was me too. So Taylor, if you don't mind doing double duty, would you mind pulling up the second slide in that same PowerPoint?
One moment, please.
Great. Great. Okay, perfect. This one is a much shorter element since there weren't too many updates to the inter jurisdictional coordination chapter. And one of the benefits of having a small amount of updates means I can just present the major amendments just on the screen if you want to see them in detail, but I just want to give a quick overview on inter jurisdictional coordination on the updates. Again, it's almost identical to the presentation that was presented in spring. But the proposed 2024 updates within the inter jurisdictional coordination element are relatively minor. There were eight total updates, but the vast majority were minor word changes such as changing language like stakeholder to parties or residents. And there was another change related to the removal of the Snohomish Health District, which only because they're no longer considered a separate jurisdiction. They're part of the county. So it wasn't appropriate to have them in the inter jurisdictional coordination section. The the three policy updates are the ones on the screen that are more substantial. And just to go real quickly over them, the one of the major substantial changes was to add a minimum residential density requirement to the list of inter jurisdictional issues that can be addressed with inter local agreements. And you can see the subsection H. Just one of the other issues is minimal residential density standards. The second major policy change to objective one C. And now it reads as the county should collaborate with cities and towns on development regulations within the UGA's. Is is kind of a minor word change, but it's just modifying the word choice so that the coordination of county and city regulations is optional. And that just provides more county discretion and design for certain projects. And related is the change to policy one C one, which now reads the county may seek inter local agreements with the cities which identify development standards for each UGA. And again, that's just kind of a minor word choice to give the county more discretion. When dealing with projects, so kind of a very quick, small update to the inter jurisdictional coordination element, but figured I'd put this slide up if you want to see the the major changes in person and just see if there's any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions? Commissioner Sheldon?
So since it's underneath the UGA, so tribes shouldn't be listed?
I, I think there is some language in the narrative of the chapter that has has tribes listed out in the narrative of the chapter, and I can pull that up too, but let's see, I, I don't know if I can pull it up on the screen, but we do have mentioned two tribes in the actual narrative of the chapter in the introduction paragraph.
I can pull that up here. Give me just a moment.
Oh, great. That that actually, I should say, that was part of the narrative change. It wasn't in the policies, but we changed the narrative, I think, in the introduction chapter, although it may be the second paragraph. And David, if you could pull it up. That'd be great. If not, I can maybe share my screen and show exactly the change to or worst case, I can just read it out. Yeah. Oh, perfect. There was a small change. I guess it was a few paragraphs down. Changing Snohomish County and cities, towns, and I used to say to lay the tribes, but now says federally recognized tribes, recognize the benefit of coordinated planning. City, county and tribes continue to participate in Snohomish County tomorrow. A joint planning policy through which goals have been formulated, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But it's to your point, that is a good point. I did want it to go through and change. It wasn't listed in the PowerPoint slide because I wanted to show off the policy changes, but we made a point to change the the narrative of the chapter to your point.
It's the question, my next question would be, would Kwame tribes be recognized in this?
A great point. And I don't want to step on too many toes because I know Henry has a presentation on tribal issues as well, but to your point, that's a good point. The language change in the chapter now says federally recognized tribes. Recognize the benefit of coordinated planning and, oh, Henry, I see you taking the the stand over here, but no, it's a good point. I think there was a concerted effort to change the language to address fairly recognized tribes, but but Henry, if you want to acknowledge why it was written that way instead of all tribes, please go ahead.
To directly answer the question, the federally recognized tribes, the Snow Call Me tribe would fall under that descriptor. So in this context, that would include the Snow Call Me tribe.
But this is underneath Snohomish County. How would we change it to? But we are the county where we love initials. Could we initial it more? I mean, would would this entail Seattle? Into inter local?
Good question. Let me think about that. Unless Henry going to jump in.
I believe the the word that would preclude that would be its cities, towns and federally recognized tribes, meaning within the geographic boundaries of Snohomish County.
So that correct, that correction, we wouldn't have to go through a motion or amend.
I don't believe so.
So I could trust you like watching my dog, right? I don't have one. That you'll make these changes.
It's there.
The changes are proposed to be made. This is.
Okay. So we don't need a motion to correct it?
No, this change is proposed and
Thank you.
You could trust me to watch your dog.
Because he's invisible.
Bring him in. Thanks very much for that. Okay.
I had a question.
Any, any discussion? Yes, I sure Campbell.
I had a question. The language is not back up there, but it seems like this whole process by which cities provide are under the Growth Management Act to provide urban level of services. And I certainly understand the coordination on minimum densities. I think that's a good add here. I'm kind of curious why we're softening the language, may do this. Isn't there other language in the elements that really work more directly on annexations and agreements and making sure there is a process by which those agreements are reached or is this not in this one or is it just seems like we, in terms of creating urban level services, cities are supposed to be the provider. So it would seem like we ought to be working a little bit more directly on doing that.
That's a great question. And I know exactly what you're talking about, especially with regard to objective. Once you and once you won, and thanks for pulling that up, David. A great point. I think there's, there's kind of two things going on. In one way, we do try to harden the regulations by saying now we want to ensure that there's minimum residential standards when there's annexation issues. But you can see that the language, on the other hand, does soften some of the demands. It used to say that we would ensure that the county and development regulations were consistent with the city's regulations within UGAs. And we used to say the county shall seek interlocal agreements with the cities. But from my understanding, when I was working with certain county staff, it wasn't done to let cities off the hook per se. It was more done just to give the county itself more leeway and more discretion in case we had issues where instead of exactly matching the city's regulations, we would have a little bit more freedom to have our own discretion when we put regulations in case they didn't match the city. But you're right, that may open up some danger by letting ourselves off the hook if we don't match the city's regulations, if they are more stringent. But I guess to that point, it, I think it was written in a way to, to just give ourselves the freedom to make our own unique regulations, even if they didn't match the cities with the intention that you know, our, our own guidance wouldn't lead to the, the wrong type of regulations that we're putting on ourselves.
So if, if I could, if I could just jump in and provide additional clarification on this. So there was a time when we had cities that wanted the county to adopt their development standards within the unincorporated portion of, of their UGA. This is like a 20-year-old kind of conversation. The county's position was it would be very difficult for staff to administer 20 different regulations for development review. And so there was, so we pushed back on cities on that. Over the last decade, we haven't seen a city approach us to press this issue. And so kind of as, as Michael noted, we have softened this language here in, in 1C1 to essentially take us off the hook because logistically, it really is difficult to, if we were to have to administer and have, have our own PDS development review staff memorize not only our code, but multiple jurisdictions' codes as well. There is a method, if a jurisdiction would like their standards to apply in the corporate area, it's simply called annexation. And I think as we all know, under the Growth Management Act, there is an expectation that the county will not be in the urban business over the long term. It will be, that will be something the cities will do. Unfortunately, in, in many parts of the count southwest UGA, we haven't seen that played out. And so the pace of annexations is much, has been much slower in the southwest UGA than it has, say, in like Stevens or Marysville, where there was much more activity in, in those jurisdictions to annex out to the edge of their UGA boundary. So that's the reason behind the, the changing shall to may in this policy.
Thank you very much for that. Implementing the realities after the GMA was passed and watching that unfold. And Tom was at the front row seat of that. Any other discussion at this time? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the interjurisdictional coordination. Geez, I'm typing better.
We're good. Motion to approve from Commissioner Sheldon, interjurisdictional coordination, and seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion?
I apologize. I could not hear who seconded.
Commissioner Brown. Okay, we have before us a motion to approve interjurisdictional coordination element made by Commissioner Sheldon, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? Taylor, go ahead and take the vote.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Thank you very much, planning commission and staff. Interjurisdictional coordination element is approved unanimously. Now we move to land use.
All right, land use. We're now getting into, getting into one of the bigger, bigger elements here. And we've got Sarah online here. So I think we'll move her over as a panelist and we'll move you back, Michael. Sarah? Hey, Sarah. What do you need up?
Nothing right now. So thank you. I'm Sarah Titkum, planner with PDS. So a number of new and revised policies are proposed for the land use element as described in the April 7th staff report and the September 12th memo. And I'll just give a really brief kind of bolted point, high-level summary here of the, the major changes. The first is that we are proposing a new equity sub-element for the overall land use element. We're changing, are proposing to change how growth targets are addressed, emphasizing urban infill and reducing growth in rural areas. There's a new county-wide centers objective and policies as well as map to implement the MPPs and CPPs. And there are new agriculture, agricultural policies to allow for more conservation and restoration. I also wanted to note that with the recommended approval of docket MV2 from yesterday, we will want to note in any motion you make for the land use element, know that Objective 6D and 61 have been repealed with the recommended approval of MV2. So that will be part of this, any motion for, for tonight. Any kind of questions you have, I'm happy to answer anything and go over anything in more detail.
Thank you, Sarah. And I sure saw your name coming up a lot when we got public comments. And that was really great. Any questions for Sarah while she's here? Commissioner Campbell?
I'm not sure what goes where, but I did send around to everyone some amendments. And some of them feel like they fit right into land use. One might fit more into the housing element, but they do all affect land use and zoning. And so this may, it's not necessarily a question. It's, it's a direction that I would want to explore. Whether I present that now at before a motion or after a motion is unclear to me.
Okay, I thought I've got on this is maybe we could entertain a motion that would include, David, listen, listen to this now and see what you think because it's up to you. Could we include in a motion to approve recommended amendments? As one motion?
You would just do the main motion and then there would be amendments that would be discussed.
Okay, so you, so we do a main motion and then still do the amendments?
Same process.
Okay. Any other discussion? On land use? Do I hear a motion?
Fine. Make a motion to approve the, the land use element?
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Sheldon to approve. Do we have a second? Okay, Commissioner Brown gives us a second to approve. That's the main motion. And before we vote on there, on that, there may be an amendment. Is there an amendment? Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Campbell?
And Taylor, I don't know. It might be important to bring my piece up at a certain point, but let me just see if we're in the right place and the right ballpark. I spent a lot of time thinking about what our role is as planning commissioners and what the challenges are for doing what's necessary is to create more infill and also to really protect the forest and agricultural lands that exist in the county, which have been lost at a pretty astounding rate. I have a company that I work with that I did a time series looking at forests and agricultural lands that have been lost since the 90s, which was really the last time that we've looked at this, so that there's a fair amount of zoning, whether it be Ag 10 or R5 out there, that is creating incentives for property owners to create rural clusters and the like. And so having been at the start of the GMA, I was fairly astounded when in this process, and I wanted to serve as a planning commissioner because it's really on-the-ground experience to, to look at what's changed. And really, where are we now pivotally in the times of climate change of looking at regenerative agriculture and working farms and protecting forests for the long term? But there's a requirement to identify all forests and agricultural lands of long-term significance. It's, it's right in the middle of, of the GMA. And when I was writing that language, I was, good, there's soils, there's, you know, history of use, there's a set of criteria for that. So when I saw that we have opportunities for those lands to be converted to clusters frequently, I'm going, boy, we're losing some of the, the last big parcels. I read recently that there's a pre-application near Lake Bosworth for, on 600 acres for a 200-unit rural cluster, which you know, we have a lot in the toolkit. We have land conservation initiative and other pieces that are coming forward. So my first amendment would be, and it's, I wrote it to you, that Snohomish County shall conduct a comprehensive review of designated forest and agricultural lands of long-term significance. The review shall identify important parcels of forest and ag lands and downzone those parcels that qualify in the property tax codes for such purposes and to reduce the likelihood that these lands will be converted to housing and rural clusters. That is my amendment in that section. And believe that it's time to bring forward a review of especially the larger parcels. I haven't like, I purposely left this vague so that it can be reviewed by the PDS staff and others. I know that there's a long history with some of those parcels that, that people have looked at. But I'm, I'm concerned that unless we, we have to almost act like adults, if we're serious about the rural population targets and we're serious about creating infill, that we have to do some downzoning. And I don't see any way around just business as usual. So I think we need to do a more serious review of the forest and agricultural lands of long-term significance.
Commissioner Campbell, can I ask a question?
Of course.
And so you're asking, the amendment is basically asking for the county to review the lands right now? Not necessarily, I mean, review and then if appropriate, downzone?
Yes. David, you look like you're looking for something.
I was just getting to the, I think the section, the section of the land use element that Commissioner Campbell, Vice Chair Campbell is, would be targeting with his amendment.
One is 78. I'm not sure.
As well as 8A as well for the forestry.
Yeah. So this is goal, goal eight deals with
So they're both. I'm, I'm targeting both ag lands and the forest lands.
Ag lands is, is the prior goal, goal seven.
Yeah.
Do we want to spell out this proposed amendment to the main motion?
Taylor, do you have the language?
Yes.
All second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Bastide. This, this is on the, oh, on the amendment. Okay.
Does that look correct?
Yeah, I think you got it. That was the section, section A that I wanted.
Look, look at that first line after motion and before conduct might need to go away. After motion and before conduct. The motion shall conduct, conduct.
Snohomish County shall conduct, as I had said.
Right, we can drop include. Good. It's like you've written code before. Commissioner Brown?
Reading this now, I guess what's going to quantify an important parcel? You're, I mean, who's defining that? What's, what's that definition? Because if a landowner owns 500 acres, what's and they want to develop it, I mean, what, you're asking the county to identify important parcels? I mean, what's? What's that definition?
Well, the first definition is lands of long-term commercial significance, which is defined in the code. So that's your starting point for what, those lands that are important. So that's the starting point. Secondarily, then there's a fair amount of work going on in the county about important parcels of land that can be used or acquired by the Land Conservation Initiative, whether there would be funding from the Department of Natural Resources in the state budget. I can't make a determination. It's kind of premature. I'm going to allow the experts to make a determination of what those priorities look like.
That looks to me so much like code and it's so involved that I wonder if we could shrink that down to one sentence that conveys the concept, but leaves it to staff to do it. Is that, is that fair, Tom? Or is that just, that's a long, long passage. And it's asking a lot of us to try to approve that without being sure.
You can just leave the second sentence off if you, if you. I, I want
You're after down.
I would like to take, leave for such purposes for, to reduce the likelihood.
Of down, but you want to see the down zones?
Mm-hmm. Well, I think we want to see the review.
See the
Sorry. Yeah, I think we want to see the review go through first, before the down zones. I mean, they should be appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if that could be reduced without changing the spirit of the
Yeah, and that's an important point.
I mean, I, I might support this, but I probably would stop supporting it if it wasn't for the review thing.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on this motion, this amendment?
Question?
Commissioner Sheldon?
Even though it's a long element and we're just looking at this one motion, what if there's other, other ones in here? Robert Rose only did, taught me so much.
No, you vote on each amendment. Sorry. Vote on each amendment and they stand or they fall. And then you vote for final passage on the full main motion.
Okay, so discussion now is we have a, an amendment to the main motion. Is discussion going to include anything involving this? Or are we, are we good for a vote on it?
I'm
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell, seconded by Commissioner Bastide on this amendment. Taylor, go ahead and take the vote.
Commissioner Ash?
A somewhat conflicted yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Same answer. Yes.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
Unanimous approval of the proposed amendment, secondary amendment to the main motion. Is there another amendment to make? Seeing none, or go back?
Yeah, I'll move to the, to the transfer of development rights. That is Sarah, help me go. Goal 11?
I couldn't hear the question, actually. Sorry.
Sarah, the, we're moving to the transfer of development. 13?
A 14, 1-4.
Sorry to make everybody dizzy here. There we go. Okay.
Yes, I would like to
Okay, share a motion. Second amendment to the Second amendment to the main motion.
Um, and this would be on number C, Taylor?
Number we had to do?
In A, C.
No, I'm talking, it's on, it's under fourteen A, right? Yeah. Right. So Taylor, you probably have it somewhere. Let me just say that I think TDRs, ten, development rights are a really important component to preserve working farms and forest lands and it's a little bit complicated process, but they're certificates and I want them to be more widely used. And my thought is that since we are increasing densities within the urban areas, that we should, um, include residential and townhouse, you know, lot subdivisions to help conserve those working lands. So I would repeal the provision that exempts, um, residential family and townhouse unit subdivisions, so we can increase the use of TDRs.
So I think the section that, that, um, your amendment would be applicable to is, uh, policy fourteen A eight, which designates, uh, where receiving areas are, and just for the purposes of, of context. The property that a development right would be transferred off of is referred to as a sending area. And the property where that right then is being transferred to is the receiving area. And policy fourteen A eight includes a list of what receiving areas shall include. This is also codified in county code in chapter thirty, thirty-five A, provides the, the regulatory structure for the county's transfer development rights program. But the policy as far as what constitutes a receiving area is set out here. You could see under fourteen A, subsection A, all cities consistent with the regional, uh, program or in local agreements, all county designated urban centers, all rural areas, we're changing in zoning, increases the maximum allowable, residential lots, all areas. So the one.
It's the last sentence in subsection.
Yeah. So the last section here, subsection D, um, is talking about urban areas. And this was a, a change that was made some time ago to exempt out, uh, properties that were designated or zone for single-family residence development and townhome, you know, lot subdivisions, they're exempt from the TDR, uh, requirements. So meaning that they don't, in order to achieve that additional density that may occur through either a comp plan change or through a change in development regulations, they don't have to go out and buy, buy TDR credits to get that difference in what they might realize from a base density to what, if you add TDR, you could get this density.
And so when we're increasing densities in the urban infill areas, it seems like being able to include townhomes and the like in the TDR, um, process seems like a, an important change.
Are you saying townhome only or townhome and single family?
Um, that last sentence, I would remove that sentence so that they are eligible for TDR uses, just to increase the receiving areas.
All second.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Severs.
Bastide.
Bastide, thank you. Let's take that thing in the way in the middle there. To, uh, and I'm not clear exactly where the last sentence starts and ends here. I see the end, but are we going to put that up on the main screen?
Yeah, that's it. So there's the sentence, sorry. I can zoom. Oh, sorry. I got a little bit too big. Got a little carried away there. There.
Mr. Campbell, is that reading okay for you?
Yeah, I don't think we have to put in to help concern. I mean, it, that's sort of what they do. So it could just be to lose that last sentence. It's just not material to the code. Yeah.
Go back.
Yeah, leave subdivisions in. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion with second to amend the main motion, the second amendment to transfer development rights. That can maybe, can be used to obtain additional development capacity. Repeal provision fourteen A D that exempts properties designated or zone for single-family residential and townhouse unit, lots, subdivisions made by, okay, and then we have our motion from Campbell and Bastide. So we have a second amendment before us. Any discussion?
Say all the time. I, I think this is, I think for the sending areas, this is a good, it's good for the county and et cetera. I do have a real pet peeve just on that track. Well, on the, uh, mostly up from the sending areas, you know, and I complained about this with Forterra way back that for some reason Forterra went out and, and they could buy the cheapest land, that the sending areas also include floodplains and wetlands and that are agriculturally zoned, places that couldn't be developed as urban areas anyway. And so they were competing these floodplains, which the farmer could sell the transfer development rights for. You know, he could sell them cheap because he had no other value except for maybe crops. Well, meanwhile, there were actually working farms that were losing position because they couldn't afford to sell their development rights for the same price this worthless development land was selling for. Now I, this is just a comment and something to get off my chest and to re, because I don't think I'm going to at this time try to correct anything, but I like Sarah in the county while you're looking at this is to think more about the sending areas and maybe even consider a graduated, uh, allotment, I guess, to farms that do have commercial significance versus these floodplain areas that, uh, really have no development potential in the first place. That's just something to, and thank you, my chest is a lot.
Tom, do you want to take that on? Any, any sense of compatibility, I think? Okay.
I, I don't want to include it now, but I, I do agree that part of the reason I was wanting to identify forest and ag lands of long-term commercial significance is because they then have a value that should be placed in priority, um, so that they can be maintained as working farms and forests. So it's well noted and I appreciate Commissioner Ash, Ash's point of view.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion on the second amendment? Are we ready for a vote? Taylor, go ahead and take the vote on the second amendment.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. And Commissioner Campbell, the motion, second amendment passes unanimously. Is there another amendment? We have two amendments to the main motion, which is to prove the land use section as written, as amended. Any discussion? I hope that's okay to say as amended. It's kind of complicated, but it's all on record. So as amended, any discussion? This is on the main motion to approve the land use section as amended. Taylor, go ahead and take the vote.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Okay, good discussion, good amendments, and land use section is approved as written with, as amended. Very good.
Thank you for indulging me on my.
Well, that was great. Uh, we're working it over. Next up is housing element. I think we might want to start thinking about a break too, but, uh, do you want to do a break now or do housing element first? What do you think, Dave?
It's your guys' call. It's, it's up to you to decide if you need.
I'd stick it out, do housing if you want to. Are we okay? Okay, housing element.
Amber Piona, PDS. Uh, so I'm here to talk about the housing element. So the housing element did, uh, is being proposed for significant changes and these are almost entirely due to the changes in state law. So, um, the, um, housing, uh, goal, the GMA housing goal was amended, uh, by House Bill twelve twenty and also the requirements for housing element. So modifications to existing policies to meet state housing law include policies incorporating considerations for moderate, low, very low and extremely low income households. Policies that consider the role of accessory dwelling units and moderate density housing types in meeting the county's housing needs. Policies to undo racially disparate impacts and exclusion in housing caused by past planning. Housing targets to meet the county's twenty forty-four housing need for all income groups as well as emergency housing and permanent supportive housing. And also there is a new anti-displacement objective in supporting policies as well as a map showing areas of displacement risk in the county. There also are two appendices to the housing element, um, which include the housing needs analysis and then there'll be a land capacity analysis with, um, the preferred alternative. So that, uh, could have concludes the overview and available for questions.
Okay, thanks very much. Any questions at this time on the housing element? Commissioner Sheldon?
Define very low.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, um, all of these income bands are based on the, uh, the area median income. This is a HUD figure. So, uh, extremely low income is for households that are making thirty percent or less of the area median income. Very low is thirty to fifty percent of the area median income. Low is fifty to eighty percent of the area median income. Um, moderate is eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. And then the rest is just considered above moderate, so above one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income.
Then, then my, my other question would be, because we're in the question, but why isn't, um, homeless in this chapter? I didn't, when I looked through, I didn't see anything about home. This is something in the future? I mean, this is a comp plan, right?
Right. So there, there are policies that talk about homelessness. Um, there's also, uh, the goal of the housing element is to actually to provide housing for all households, sort of, whether or not they're currently housed or not. So that would be, um, like permanent supportive housing would be include housing for, um, people who are homeless, also emergency housing. That's, um, I mean, emergency shelters that would also be included in those housing needs.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions? Commissioner Campbell?
I didn't put my hand up yet. It's actually, it's, it's actually not a question. It is sort of an amendment. We, we can frame it in the form of a question, but, um, I have, I live in Swuga, southwest urban growth area, the unincorporated area north of Bothell and between that and Mill Creek. And housing obviously is one, probably the most challenging area that we face. There's just no question that especially for very low and low and moderate income, we have very few units and it's very hard to price it. It's very, very difficult to make it work. I am a developer. I am a builder. Actually, on either side of our Clearwater Commons, um, on the, on the east side, we have forty units going in and I propose both with housing hope to create some affordable housing units there, of which D R Horton, no surprise, did not go along with me. Um, I have another fifty units going on my west side and it is very, very difficult. They're doing, and these large developers are doing market rate housing and I get it. I wish that in some of my housing, I would have put some deed restrictions in there so it didn't, a, a home that I sold for five fifty went for nine hundred thousand dollars a year and a half later. That makes things unaffordable. It is the way the market works and it's unfortunate. So I am proposing that Snohomish County develop an inclusionary housing and zoning policy in areas of multifamily housing to ensure that a mix of housing is created in areas of infill development. There is no affordable housing in Southwest County. And unless we step up with a stronger toolkit, other, it's in the planning world, inclusionary zoning and housing is used as one of the pieces of the pie. And I think the cities need to do more of it. And I think if the county takes a lead in supporting this, um, which generally is like a developer, either get some credits or get some additional funding to maintain, say, ten percent of the units in, uh, for very low, lower, moderate income, depending on the AMI and all the financing. That goes into the policy. I just want that the county to take a lead in looking at inclusionary zoning, um, and housing so that we really can meet what the, the goal is to ensure a mix of housing for all segments of the population. Unless we have this tool, I just fear we're just going to keep on going and, you know, and I just see people that can afford it are able to get it and those that rather, they're camping on my land in places. So I would love to see us take a snack at this policy.
Well, the county agrees. Uh, so the urban core subarea, which is an area which includes a big portion of the Southwest UGA, that, that urban core subarea has its own element and within that there are housing policies specific to that area. And the county is proposing a targeted inclusionary zoning program for, uh, that area of the county. So you would be proposing something be beyond that or in addition to that?
So is there a policy already there?
Yes.
So you have a, can you show it to me?
I sure can.
Yeah. I didn't see it.
We'll, we'll bring it, we'll bring it up here. I know we're going to get to the, um, it's a little further down the, down the agenda, but we'll, we'll get, bring that up.
But yes, I would prefer that it goes broader than the, just the, the urban core element because Southwest outside of that area in the, uh, Swuga, like Thrasher's Corner and, and between Bothell, Mill Creek needs it as well. So I think that's excluded.
And, and just, just to, just as a, a sneak preview, uh, in January, for your January planning commission meeting, you will get a briefing on a new mixed-use corridor zone that includes a mandatory inclusionary zoning component. We're already going beyond the policy and working on regulations.
Nice.
Again, specific to the urban core.
All right.
Commissioner Ash?
Can I ask for a question clarification when you're doing this? Is it, is it a punitive requirement or a incentive-driven requirement?
So you're asking, is it a mandatory or?
Yeah, mandatory. I mean, is the, is the developer have to, I mean, is it burden totally on the developer or is there incentives like increased density, heights, building heights, something to, something to incentivize the developers? I mean, usually, you know, a little candy draws more flies than a big stick, so.
Right. So I don't want to get too far ahead of what we'll be talking about in January, but, uh, so there is, uh, we're proposing a new zone, uh, within the urban core subarea. And so there are some sort of carrots sort of built into that zone as far as what is permitted within it. And so inclusionary, um, housing would be mandatory within that. And so that would be, and there's also, I again, don't want to get too far into it. There's also a potential height bonus for inclusion of, uh, a extremely low income housing unit. So we do have sort of a mix of that within there. And yes, here's, here's the proposed policy.
No, that's, that's great. And I think that would meet what I'm interested in. I just would like to see it extended beyond the, what do we call the dang thing? The urban core subarea. Because in the area in Southwest urban growth area, it's, we. urban growth area, it's, we have a lot of multifamily housing going in, and we're along transit areas. I agree with the near transit, that makes perfect sense, and multifamily. So I would like to extend that across the southwest urban growth area. As a minimum, but I can go a lot bigger.
So is the mechanism that in a given market rate plat, some percent or some number of homes will be of lesser size or lesser cost such that they fit the
Correct.
the lower income area? Okay.
Yes, they would be affordable so that it would be affordable as defined as whatever income band. They'd be paying no more than 30% of their monthly expenses or monthly income towards housing.
Okay, Commissioner Ash?
I want to clarify, he had made, said the word plat, and I don't think this would go towards single-family homes. It would go towards multifamily units, right?
This policy does not make that clear, but again, I think in January, when we have the actual proposed regulation.
Yeah, I think that'd be important distinction.
Yes.
My distinction was for multifamily housing.
Okay.
Gosh, if this is, we're going to be reviewing this or making amendments to it, because I would, I would like to see it targeted to multifamily housing throughout the county in areas near transit. I can, I like having incentives included in the policy, but I still think it should be mandatory.
Is this something we'd take up in January, or you want?
That's what I'm not sure of.
So at, at this time, I think, at this time, again, I know we jumped over, we jumped to a different, wrong mouse, we jumped to a different element. So at this point in your, in your deliberations, you're talking about the housing element.
Yes.
You introduced the topic. We responded to your question that we do have this in the urban core subarea plan. So I think the discussion right now is, is the housing element, as I understand it. Vice Chair Campbell, you're looking at potentially adding a new policy to the housing element regarding inclusionary zoning.
I am, and if, Taylor, you could bring up my piece under infill, that one. I could amend it just a little bit, that one.
And we probably
You could just take Snohomish County, Shell.
We probably should have a main motion too, and we're not there yet.
Okay, sorry. Should we get there first?
Yeah, let's do a main motion.
Make motion to approve the housing element?
Motion by Commissioner Sheldon?
I'll second, my mic's on.
And seconded by Commissioner Campbell to approve the housing element. And so now we have a main motion, and let's move to the amendment to the main motion.
Commissioner Campbell, as we formulate words to capture this, I just think it's really important to, I guess, kind of going back to Commissioner Ash's comments about incentive, otherwise we drive development away. They, they will choose other places. We need more of it here, so we want to encourage it. I just, I don't, I don't know the right approach on this. I know what we want to have, but we have to make it pencil.
Agreed, and I, I wanted to leave it toward multifamily housing for larger developers. I would encourage there to be incentives included in the policy. We could add that in. That would be, I think, useful. I wanted to link it in my, did it disappear? You're going to put it back up there, Taylor? My
Do you want the motion, or do you want your language?
I want my language to start with. The question I had was, so this is for multifamily housing. I would say instead of to ensure, to encourage that a mix of housing, and then I wanted to add near transit, and you have transit, right? Is, is high-capacity transit better, or is it, I'm not sure where we land when we just say transit?
So again, not getting too far ahead with the urban core subarea plan element deliberations. When we've targeted that mixed-use corridor designation and zone to be a long corridor such as Highway 99, which has community transit, swift bus rapid transit on it. The other corridors where the mixed-use designation and zone would apply also have swift bus service. For the most part, there is a couple of exceptions. One at Fourth Avenue and 112th, where there is local bus service. So there is that, you know, so there, we are applying it generally in areas that have the BRT, which has the higher frequency of bus service, but we also identified an area in the urban core that also made sense for the mixed-use corridor where there is local service. So defer to you as far as, you know.
Right, I mean, I, I live on Swift Lines, so that's rapid transit?
Yeah, but the, that's the green line that runs along both of our highway, the bus rapid transit.
I think we can just leave it where you put that includes transit at the end, in areas of infill development and available transit at the end of that, Taylor? You moved me away.
Do you want to see the motion, or do you want to see just that language?
I want to, I want you to pull my language into this motion.
Okay, I can do that. I just have to have this off the screen to do.
Yeah.
Can I suggest a amendment to the language or a little?
Let me get it up there first and say how I want to say it, and then you see if you want it.
I just want to add two words.
I think I might have already. Yes, so and, and areas of multifamily housing to encourage a, you can take that out?
Can you repeat that?
After encourage, take that out. And then at the end, in area, in areas of infill development and public transit.
And Taylor, let's go back up to the word second and call it secondary. A secondary motion to amend the main motion for Snohomish County to develop an inclusionary zoning, housing and zoning policy in areas of multifamily housing to encourage a mix of housing. Or encourage that a mix of housing. Right after encourage, you can put in that, the word that, right there. That a mix of housing is created in areas of infill development and public transit. Made by Commissioner Campbell, seconded by Commissioner Sheldon. And then Commissioner Ash, you wanted to throw in a couple of words?
Yeah. We, I think we'd feel better if it said, where it says Snohomish County to develop a incentive-driven inclusionary housing plan, zoning policy. I just want to get that word incentive into this.
Commissioner Campbell, you okay with that?
I'm okay to start with, yeah.
Okay.
I think you could start with incentives.
That's great.
And then you got to get somewhere, but if we're not working, we got to go a little further.
Yeah, but that's a good start to it. Okay, so we have an amendment to the main motion. Any discussion on it? Everybody okay with this wording right now? Taylor, go ahead and call the roll. This is on the amendment.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Sheriff Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash?
Yes. The amendment is approved unanimously, so at this point in time, we have a motion, a main motion to approve the housing element as amended. Any discussion?
Can I ask one more question? I also added in here, and I don't know where it fits, and maybe it's really probably not as big a deal to me right now. I'm just still trying to promote affordable housing and infill development, but parking rules and regulations often become cumbersome for being able to do a mix of housing. And I mean, I've done different ways of doing it, and I think that it may promote infill. I don't know if this fits in housing or where it fits, but, or it's in transportation, and maybe it's not, I'm not wedded to doing something. I think I need more information about parking, but I think changing parking requirements to promote more infill development is an important issue somewhere.
You want to discuss that? Go ahead.
I'll, I'll take a shot at this. Parking might be up there in terms of one of the more divisive topics in planning. There are, I think, many people who would like to see parking as it was sort of existed in the 1960s and 1970s continue today, and there are certainly probably an equal number of people that would just assume that the whole concept of parking be eliminated, meaning that we don't have parking, which implies any number of things that you want to conjure up with regards to that viewpoint. That said, there are aspects of, of county code that, over the last decade, that has looked at trying to, as maybe the best way to phrase it, right-sized parking. Maybe to try to find some improvements. Vice Chair Campbell is correct, there is sort of a relationship between the cost of parking and how that plays into development, and there have been, as I said, some different initiatives. I worked on a, on a major code effort which looked at modifying the county's parking rates. That was going on about eight, nine years ago now. And, and there have been some more recent efforts to review parking as well, including some that have originated out of the county council office. Individual council members have been looking at this issue as well. Some of it is related to decoupling parking from development. Some of it is related to the amount of impervious surface that, that onsite parking creates and trying to reduce that there. As part of our efforts in the urban core, as well as, as, as part of our planning for light rail, this is certainly a, a, a big subject that we're looking at as well, as we see a, a future with light rail and more bus may, may reduce or, or eliminate some of the need for parking because there are other options to get around than just being able to drive a car. Though admittedly, you will hear from Sound Transit who say, we can't build enough parking at stations for everybody that wants to drive there. That's just a reality. It's not a, it's not a monetary, it's just sometimes, it's just the reality of, of things. That said, there is another school of thought in this conversation around parking, which is if we start to eliminate onsite parking today, do we push then the demand into the off-street, on-street world? And that's where then there's been also some pushback of saying, well, do we have enough road right-of-way in order to accommodate that parking that suddenly was displaced from, from those, those off-street or onsite locations? And what does that potentially mean down the future as far as the design of roads? Do they need to build in space for, for those cars? Because then that means a change in the road design. That means more impervious surface. That means higher costs. So this is a long-winded way of seeing, there's not an easy answer, and I'm trying to kind of balance a lot of viewpoints, many of whom are represented in this room tonight.
Excellent recap.
And I don't want to tackle it tonight, for sure, but I do think it's an issue that we need to look at as part of going forward, and certainly high-capacity transit, maybe within the urban core area, that's most right for some amendments to those policies. But at this point, I'm just going to leave that aside as an important topic for the future.
And, and just kind of one final, one final thought here, and maybe you should have mentioned this at, at the beginning yesterday. While you were making motions, while you were making amendments to the conference of plan, don't forget that if there are items that, that you don't see elevated as topics to include in the conference of plan, you always can include additional commentary in your transmittal letter to the county council. So if there are other items that you, that don't elevate to a change in a policy or a goal, you always can include additional commentary that you may want through your letter itself, additional things that you want the council to be aware of.
Kind of like what we used to call an amendment, a minority report.
A minor report is a little bit different under your bylaws. This would be more at the end of maybe your deliberations when you kind of
You mean something that we'd pass?
If there were some other comments that you wanted staff to include in the letter as a body, you could certainly make those.
Okay, I think Tom had his hand up, and we'll come back to, to bring.
No, I have a question about the minority report. If, can we do minority reports?
Yeah, so a minority, yeah, so your, your bylaws permit a minority report. A minority report is submitted by a member who voted, who was on the losing end of a motion.
Got it.
And then you can put together a minority report that then goes with your, with the letter to the council.
And some members could sign on to that letter.
Correct. I will just say that I think it's been 20 years since the Planning Commission submitted a minor report, so we might be a little rusty on the format.
Okay, Commissioner Sheldon, did you have something?
Does the county council go through the same hearings that we went through?
Yes, the council will hold, the council will have their own process, including public hearings and deliberations.
So we, as, as a public person, we can go back and have the, what, two, three minutes?
Yes, we have had past commissioners provide individual testimony at county council. It's a little bit on the rare side, but there have been some commissioners who chose to provide some, some oral and written statements directly to the county council as individual members, not as a planning commissioner, but just as an individual resident of the count.
Yeah, because I got two titles. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, at this point in time, barring any further discussion, we have a motion to approve the housing element as written, from Commissioner Sheldon, seconded by Commissioner Campbell, as amended. Any discussion? Taylor, go ahead and take the vote on the housing element.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Sheriff Larson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash?
Yes. Housing element as amended has been approved. Thank you very much for that discussion and vote. Next, we move to, and are we moving through now?
I would
a break, or?
Yes, I moved to take a break.
Let's take a break and reconvene at a little bit before 5:28. Okay, I think we're back in attendance here. Next item before us is the natural environment element, including the urban tree canopy policies, and staff, go ahead.
All right, so we've got Terry Strandberg that's joining us online, and we'll get her over as a panelist, and, and I'll have Terry provide an overview of the natural environment element amendments, and then Hillary McGowan, who's seated next to me, will go over the, the urban tree canopy policy sub-element of the natural environmental element.
Terry, are you there?
Terry, do you need anything queued up?
I do not have anything prepared in terms of something that needs to go up on the wall.
So if you want to go ahead and give us an overview of the natural environmental, then I'll have Hillary go.
The, the natural environment chapter itself, aside from the tree policies that Hillary will speak about, has not a significant amount of changes to it. Most of the changes are related to language for, to increase inclusivity and to address equity. And to, there are a couple substantive policies related to water quality, which were, was kind of a gap in, in the existing policies. So we're proposing some additional policies on, on how to address water quality within the county, both groundwater and for surface waters. Excuse me, I'm going to cough here for a second, sorry. But in, in terms of, you know, it's a pretty high-level overview. But the, the natural environment policies and the introductory text has changed slightly. And then the policy language has been improved for some clarity and to change some of the shoulds to shalls in, in some of the cases to make the, the policies a bit more of a, of a substantive item for the county to follow through on. But other than that, the primary change to the natural environment section is related to the tree canopy polys, policies, which are, I'll hand over to Hillary to, to review those with you.
Thank you, Terry. Yeah, going over the new tree canopy sub-element. So as a, just a general reminder, these policies were referred to Planning Commission and Planning and Development Services by county council through amended motion 22-096.
Hillary, I'm sorry, can you pause real quick? Your Zoom got logged out.
Oh. Okay, my apologies for everyone. Oh, do I need to unmute it? No, okay. Restarting again. So these policies were brought forward to PDS, and we did make some minor changes from the amended motion. Largely, they were organizing them in a different way, kind of rephrasing them based on prior language within regulations and policies that we have already in place. And the major one was the policy about no net loss. And we instead changed the policy to 38% canopy coverage, which is, that number is based on the most recent canopy coverage mapping that we have. And you'll see in the policy comparison memo, which was sent out last week, the current tree canopy, or the previous tree canopy number we had was 30%, and that was specifically for urban unincorporated residential areas. So we have seen an increase in that tree canopy coverage during the time, and so this 38% reflects that. And I'm just going to do a fairly high level going through the summary of the objectives and policies to just refresh it. So the biggest part is to develop an urban or forest management program that would be for urban unincorporated areas, and it identifies, protects, maintains, restores forests and plants that have significant environmental, habitat, cultural, public health, and aesthetic values. This would be modeling the urban forest management program on the Evergreen Communities Act, which is RCW 7615. Creates that area-wide minimum of 38%. I would also implement a periodic assessment of tree canopy and inventory, as well as update our codes and rules to better protect urban forests. It also would provide urban forest resources equitably across urban forest areas in Snohomish. Yeah, those are, that's the high level, and I'm open for questions if you have any.
Thanks, Terry and Hillary. Any questions at this time? We did get a comment from Commissioner James, who might want to put it up on the screen if it's possible, just to honor his input. He's flying down to League of Cities meeting for tomorrow. Terry, do you have a comment on that? Are we going to create a whole new department for tree canopy or not? This is just Commissioner James is raising this question.
So we don't know if it'd be a whole department. It is likely that we estimated that there would be approximately seven FTEs. What we guessed is that it would be at least a division level. As Carol discussed previously, that it is likely to be housed in DCNR, but there's no actually implementation efforts going on right now, since we're still in these preliminary stages.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Any other questions or input from Planning Commission at this time? Do I hear a motion then?
I would move that we adopt the natural resource element, including the urban tree canopy policies.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell to adopt natural element, including the tree canopy policy. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Ash. This is a big part of our, uh, public hearing. A lot of comments about tree canopy.
And I apologize, I could not tell who was speaking when we were making the motions.
I moved the motion. Commissioner Ash seconded it.
Any discussion at this time? Okay, Taylor, good job on that. All right, there it is, a motion to adopt national, the natural element, natural environmental element, including the tree canopy policies made by Commissioner Campbell, seconded by Commissioner Ash.
Question?
Yes, sir.
The question would be, these would be just in county areas, correct? Not in cities or whatever?
Yeah, this, these policies are specifically for urban unincorporated.
Could this motion make be in a MOA throughout the county? To adopt a tree canopy program?
I don't believe that we, we can do that. I'm going to let David take this one.
Yeah, I think it might be a little difficult from an implementation standpoint, if this would, this were brought, if this policy were broadened to include more than just the unincorporated urban area, say, including cities. The countywide planning policies serve as sort of, as the guiding force for both the county and the cities. And so that would be the more appropriate place if we wanted something that, that then the cities had to incorporate in their comprehensive plan, would be at the countywide planning policy level, not at the county's comprehensive plan level. I will say that the commission did hear a lot about the importance of trees at your public hearing. I know there are efforts on a jurisdiction by jurisdiction to, to look at the topic. But I can't say that that's a universal idea, meaning that every jurisdiction in the county is, is looking at, at ways to, to protect trees. But I do know that, that is, it is a topic that I have, have seen in the newspaper. I know Everett was looking at, at theirs. I know Seattle is the one that a lot of people have been, has gotten most of the attention for what they're doing down in Seattle. But I think it would be challenging to implement a policy in the comprehensive plan that applies to the county and the cities. That's really appropriate for the countywide planning policies.
Because everyone, when they spoke, kind of were all over the place. So my question is, is this adequate?
The tree canopy sub-element was one of, of the county council motions that was referred to the Planning Commission and the update for, for further analysis. The intent of that motion is specific to unincorporated urban areas, as, as Hillary mentioned. And that's the, that's, you know, staff has, has taken that, and that's what's been incorporated in the natural environmental.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheldon. Any other comment before we, or question before we take our vote?
Hillary, can I ask a clarifying question? In, I believe it was June, there was a presentation that included coverage requirements. So there was like 30% for subdivisions of 10 or more lots. You remember this one? It's green. This requirement meets the 38%. This would get us there.
So the 38% came from analysis, analysis that we already are there. So it, instead of using the language that was initially presented as no net loss, we instead clarified that to be 38%, which is the current, what's currently in existence of in urban unincorporated areas.
So I'm going to use an example. I'm just trying to understand. Let's just say that we did have a piece of land that could accommodate a number of homes. And it was cleared. It, they would replant 30% to the criteria of all the species you had. I mean, I saw that whole thing. Additionally, for infill, like how, is this the same? I'm just, I'm trying to think of like real life. What does it mean? What is this?
So the current regulations in code establish a sliding scale based on the number of units and the type of development.
Right.
So this is a policy that's establishing 38%. As Hillary said, based on our existing inventory of tree canopy cover. Implementation of that policy will happen after the county council takes action on this. So at this stage, it's very difficult to sort of, sort of speculate what the final outcome will be. But certainly, certainly if the policy is ultimately adopted in the form that it's in by the council, there, then staff will then.
Thank you.
We may need to take a look at, at whether there's any inconsistencies in the policy in the code.
I understand. Thank you.
And that implementing code would come through us.
Yes, any code amendments would, would have to go through the Planning Commission.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion before we vote? Air motion? Sheldon?
Blank, blank, someone came up, I, I could read it in the book, but someone was frustrated and upset that we allow just strip land clearing. Does that happen much to county?
That does happen. I don't have the numbers up right now, but if we're talking about urban residential, the tree canopy monitoring report actually does cover all new residential permits, and it reports on if there was retained canopy. I think it was around, oh, I can't, I forget the exact number, but there were a fair number of off-the-land that were clear-cut. And no retained canopy. And that is with our current measures, and it would, if they don't retain canopy, they still have to meet the same percentage amounts that's required by the code that was just mentioned.
On eight, eight-point-three, oh, eight-point-E, point-two. It says in, in interrogated set pass management.
Oh, can you pull up the, oh, sorry. Sorry, just one minute. What policy was that again?
I, that is great reading.
Yeah.
He said policy eight-E two.
Okay.
Hillary is reading this at 11:55 Saturday. I couldn't figure out what pests would be. People, animals? She's looking at me real hard.
No, I'm, since this is the natural environment, I was going to see if Terry would jump in. But there's a similar proposed policy in the, in the urban, urban tree canopy that pests is actually covered by the state. There is RCW that goes over what pest and noxious weed control is classified as.
Oh, so it could be weed control then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions before we vote?
Insects.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions, observations? Okay, I think we're ready for a vote. Go ahead, Taylor. Take the vote.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Yes.
Sheriff Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Namella?
Yes.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Unanimous approval on the natural environment element, including the urban tree canopy by Planning Commission. Thank you very much for staff and commission on this one. Good coverage. Okay, next up, we have climate change. Simple to say, and here we go.
So we'll have Eileen Canola come back up and join us.
Hello again, Eileen Canola, Planning and Development Services. And I will be representing from our briefing. Change, thank you. The climate change and resiliency element. So essentially, just to recap, the purpose of this element, it is optional at this time. There was a House Bill 1181 that set a requirement for a climate change and resiliency element, among other things, for jurisdictions planning under the Growth Management Act. How we're forced Snohomish County, that date is not until 2029. That said, county staff felt that a response is needed and to comprehensively address climate change. It includes reducing greenhouse gas emissions and responding, adapting, and planning for current and projected impacts of climate change. I think Terry mentioned that a lot of the policies and the framework for this is based off of a climate change and sustainability sub-element from the natural environment chapter. And it also builds upon a lot of the programs that the county has been working on throughout the years. Again, it's modeled after the Washington State Department of Commerce. They had early drafts while we were developing this element of a climate change element guidance, which is now out for public review. It consists of two sub-elements. One is a resiliency sub-element, and the other one is the greenhouse gas emissions reduction. And it also supports state, regional, and local efforts for greenhouse gas emission reductions and climate resiliency. Again, as with many of the, of the elements that you've heard today, the source for a lot of the policy amendments, amendments from the natural environment element are for consistency with climate change policies that are proposed or that were, are envisioned 2050, the multi-county planning policies, as well as the countywide planning policies. And again, it works off county-existing work on sustainability and climate change and considers our county's initial growth targets and supports our land use element. And there was a lot of input, public input on this element as well. So we really listened to a lot of the comments that we received. And, and then we also received a grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce for early planning on climate change, and we use that money to develop a vulnerability and risk assessment for the county. So we're going to be hopefully rolling that out early next year. I'm sorry. So a lot of the programs and projects that the county has done over the years have really talked and spoken to greenhouse gas emission reductions and resiliency. There has been some joint resolutions aiming to for a goal of clean energy by 2045. The county has developed a sustainability operations and action plan to really look at how the county's operations are working towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions and aiming to ensure that our communities are resilient in the face of climate change. The hazard mitigation planning that does, that's developed by the county's Department of Emergency Management speaks very clearly to resiliency and mitigating hazards and risks in the county. And agricultural coordination, as I was mentioning earlier today, it is a big, climate change is really big focus for climate change, on climate change. The agricultural resiliency plan speaks to that specifically and ensures that how the county can maintain successful agricultural production in the face of climate change. And of course, as you heard from Parks and Recreation and from Hillary and Terry on the natural environment, tree canopy coverage is really important to the county and to members of the community, not only for flood mitigation, but also to mitigate heat island, the heat island effect, and ensure that, in particular, as Hillary mentioned, vulnerable communities. and ensure that, in particular, as Hillary mentioned, vulnerable communities can adapt to the impacts of climate change, such as heat. And then the land conservation initiative and transfer of development rights are also tools that we have to ensure that we have lands that can serve as carbon sinks to. And then we have low income weatherization and energy assistance programs and a commercial property assessed clean energy and resiliency program called the C Pacer Program. So these are a lot of the works in progress that really help ensure that our communities are resilient and we can adapt to the effects of climate change. So engrossed House Bill eleven eighty one was really at the core of much of this work. It adds a new planning goal for climate change and resilience to the Growth Management Act. It requires for certain jurisdictions to have this element as part of their comprehensive plan. It adds a lot of requirements for the land use, transportation, parks, and capital facilities elements. And one of those requirements for the capital facilities element was an inventory of green infrastructure. So that was new, and that was part of our capital facilities element. And it really directs commerce to really be kind of at the front and kind of man the ship with other state agencies to provide that guidance to communities. And this is the new goal. It's goal fourteen of the GMA regarding climate change and resiliency. And this is just an overview of the model element that was provided by the Department of Commerce and that we used as a model for the element. And this is a snapshot of our vulnerability and risk assessment mapping tool, which we briefed you on, I think, back in last year. And this is just going over Vision twenty fifty policies, both Vision twenty fifty and the county-wide planning policies contained a lot of new policies regarding climate change and resiliency, so those were included as part of this element. And these are the county-wide planning policies. Again, as I mentioned, we did receive a lot of comments on from the public, members of the public and other agencies, and actually also special purpose districts regarding this element in terms of climate change, and it was very supportive of making that transition to electric and clean energy in the county. So that was really good to hear. And then we did brief the Agriculture Advisory Board and the county's Climate Action Advisory Committee. And this goes into more of the draft narrative, which really sets the context for the reason why we did this. And it underscores the connection with elements of the plan, so that even though this is a climate change and resiliency element, this is done comprehensively through other elements and a lot of the programs and projects that are directed through human services, through Office of Energy and Sustainability, through Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. So it's, it takes all hands on deck to address climate change. I think I covered this, and I think that is it. Are there any questions for me?
Thanks very much, Eileen. Quite a subject. Any questions? Tom?
Well, first of all, I really want to applaud the county and PDF for putting this element together on a voluntary basis. It was a huge amount of work. You got some grants for it, and you know, getting ahead of it, I think, has been really important, so I applaud you and thank you for all that work. I had one little question. Why did we change the language from achieve to help meet? In the goal CRE two, in the wrap-up briefing, it shows, like, I believe in climate change, we need accountability somewhere. And if everybody says, well, I'm just gonna do my little part, and there's no accountability. In the Vision twenty fifty, it appears that there is county requirement to achieve these. It doesn't say, just give it your best shot. I would love to see the language go back. And I'm just, you know, before I make that amendment, I just wanted to kind of hear, like, we don't have enough accountability in climate change work, and so if everybody, we all do our, we all help, but somebody's gotta say, I'm gonna achieve this.
So you're right. So there's two places where we make that mention. Can't see. So in the vision statement, which is a really long statement, and you'll hear about it during the introduction to the comprehensive plan, but there is a section regarding resilience and conservation, where communities are resilient to the changing climate, and special efforts continue to support our most vulnerable populations. The regional greenhouse gas reduction target is being met, and the county has implemented transportation and building practices that conserve resources and promote healthy living. The county is well-prepared to respond to the natural disasters and emergency events to keep communities safe. So the regional greenhouse gas reduction target is a regional target, and that's the one that's proposed by, that was developed by the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency and is also referenced, sorry for this, it's gonna hurt your eyes. Don't look, just close them. I'll tell everyone we're there.
I was looking at CRE two, where you
Right.
changed the language.
There we go. So because it's a regional target, so like, we were just thinking, well, the county itself is gonna help meet that target. We're not, we can't reach it by ourselves because it's a regional target. If it was the county's target, which we've had in the past, we've had a target for greenhouse gas emission reductions for our county operations. But because it's a regional target where all these counties are participating, trying to meet that, then we felt that we're helping to achieve that. So I think that's, that's the thinking behind that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or thoughts?
I had, go, you make it.
Oh, I just got a question.
Oh, no.
Commissioner Sheldon.
On wildfires. And that was probably on transportation too, on exit roads. Do we, is there something that we have in the policy?
Yeah, I believe we do have a policy. I might have to look in my fine search.
I was looking at eight point, three point eight three, and it doesn't quite fit it. It's just about smoke, but.
Sorry again. So both the transportation element and this climate change and resiliency element speak to emergency transportation routes and hazard mitigation planning for that. The hazard mitigation plan is being updated. And I think it's due in twenty twenty five, so the Department of Emergency Management is leading that effort. But that is one of the, one of, one of the things that they speak to is they focus on emergency transportation routes and ensuring that we have a plan for that.
As it gets warmer, you kind of, you kind of think what happened to Hawaii would never happen here, but you just never know.
That's true.
So if he's in twenty five, okay.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Sheldon. Any other questions or thoughts at this time? Any other discussion?
Make a motion to approve the climate change and resilient element. Did I say that right? All in one word?
No.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Sheldon to approve the climate change element as written.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Campbell. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, let's take a vote. Go ahead, Taylor. When you're done.
Okay, Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Thank you, staff and planning commission. Climate change, change element is passed unanimously. Very good. Next element up is the Urban Core Subarea Plan.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Matthew Sidens. I am senior planner in long-range planning. I'm here to present the Urban Core Subarea Plan to you tonight. So the Urban Core Subarea Plan is a subarea plan, and the subarea plan is a long-range planning document for a specific area. So the Urban Core Subarea element is specific to the southwest unincorporated urban area of the county. So this is the area that's gonna be receiving future light rail transit. It's roughly in between the cities of Everett, Mill Creek, Linwood, and Muckeltoe. So the Urban Core Subarea element is a brand-new element that's being introduced into our comprehensive plan. So it's all new policies, maps, and narratives. So the subarea plan element is composed of ten sub-elements. Each of these has overarching goal and supporting policies. And just to provide some background on the timeline for the Urban Core Subarea element, in March of two thousand twenty-three, the draft policies were shared with the public for comments. The draft policies and narrative were presented to the planning commission in June of two thousand twenty-three, and the final version of the element that you see here was presented to you in September two thousand twenty-three. And with that, I'd just like to take the time to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions at this time? Commissioner Campbell?
Back to my original point about annexations and areas that would be kind of jointly planned, like between Linwood, Mill Creek, and Everett, and I don't know, is their engagement in this process of looking at this and their comments on it and their area for designated MOUGAs and all that stuff, I'm just kind of curious how the county taking the lead, are the cities on board and participating in this?
To Vice Chair Campbell, so that's an excellent question. We actually do have a map here that shows the breakdown of the MOUGA areas. So it's in section three, which is for inter-jurisdictional coordination.
And maybe while Matthew's zooming, scrolling to that map, I'll just say that the work on the Urban Core Subarea Plan sort of dates back to essentially the vote, the Sound Transit three vote in twenty sixteen. And from that point in time onward, we have been actively participating with the jurisdictions down here that surround the Urban Core Subarea. Everett and Linwood are, have been and are current partners in the planning for Everett-Lincoln extension, bringing light rail from Linwood up to Everett. So we've engaged with them, I would say, the most in terms of our work relative to the work that's happening with Sound Transit. But we have had, had periodic check-ins and conversations with Muckeltoe and with Mill Creek. They're a little more on the periphery compared to the other two jurisdictions who are part of the actual light rail system. But we have shared a lot of the stuff we've done over the years with the two jurisdictions, so there has sort of been a lot of collaboration with them. Those cities have inquired about future annexation relative to what we're planning for, and so maybe Matthew could talk a little about what we put in.
Sure, I'd just like to add, in March, when we shared the comments publicly, we actually had a meeting specifically with the cities, Sound Transit and Community Transit, just to talk about the inter-jurisdictional section and some of these policies. And we actually did introduce some of these policies that we shared with these jurisdictions. That we also had them kind of provide some input on with them. So specifically, policy UC three point two, and then policy UC three point twelve, which talks about inter-local agreements with cities. So the jurisdictions did kind of weigh in on our policies in the section.
Commissioner Ash? Okay. Any other questions or observations? Something I think I noticed that was interesting is during the public hearings and the two open houses, this is, this, in a way, this is ground zero. What is it, eighty percent of the future growth is looking at coming into this area? And I'm surprised at the lack of comments we got. In a sense, you could maybe read that as it's well-planned, we recognize the need and the location, and we're moving forward with it. I do hope that we see a demonstration of how this concept will work, and that's gonna take private investment to do that. But right now, we're, we're on the board, and it looks like we're moving down that, that direction, so it's kind of neat to see it. I thought maybe there'd be a lot of controversy, and I really didn't see it, so it's a matter of making it happen. Any other thoughts, comments? Commissioner Sheldon?
Under, I know you said I can read it, but if I read it, I can't find it again. Oh. Restoration of streams, creeks, wetlands, what are there in that, don't go too far out of the map? Where are they in the map?
Sorry, I'll just pull it up here in our environmental section. Sorry. To Chair Sheldon, so within our section for the natural environment, we do talk about, I guess, the different environmental areas that are within the Urban Core Subarea. So there is some sensitive areas like terms, there is a few different lakes, like there's Lake Stickney. There's also Martha Lake, as well as Swamp Creek. So there's some sensitive environmental areas within the Subarea Plan that we try to create policies around.
So we're just gonna make sure the practice is to reduce, that we're good enough for reduced practices or we just want to make sure that we don't, is there a policy of what happens if there is an accident? You restate. It may not be, it might not be in your poll, it might be in none of them. What is, is there a way when there's a polluted spot? Who is, that is just, that's just the whole county area right there? So no cities are in the
Correct, yeah, that the area that you see outlined in black is all unincorporated Snohomish County.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheldon. Any other questions? Any other input at this time? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Thank you, Chair Sykes. I did the last one.
Here we go, ready everyone? Do we have one more after this?
Two.
I move that we adopt the Urban Core Subarea Plan.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Campbell to adopt
Second.
Urban Core Subarea Plan as written, seconded by Commissioner Sheldon. Any discussion?
I wasn't sure if I could pronounce the word.
One thing I remember about this is the amount of parks it's coming into and connections with parks. A motion to adopt Urban Core Subarea Plans made by Commissioner Campbell, seconded by Commissioner Sheldon. Taylor, please take the vote. Taylor, please take the vote.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Thank you very much to staff. Great work. This is a major one, and to commission for unanimous approval of the Urban Core Plan. Next item before us, there are two left now, and this next one's a big one, is tribal coordination. I don't know if I have to vote on it. It's introduction and dependencies. There could be lots of conversation there. We probably won't even have to vote on it. No?
It's on.
All right, good evening. So, the next element up is the tribal coordination element. This is a new proposed element. It recognizes and supports tribal cultures, emphasizes collaboration to avoid or minimize adverse impacts to cultural and archaeological resources, aims to build resilience to the effects of climate change in a way that protects tribal sovereign and treaty rights and cultural practices, and it also has specific sections for tribes with trust lands in Snohomish County. Are there any questions on this proposed element?
So, when tribes have usual accustomed areas, are those then included in this? Is there a specific section where they, you really identify the UNA areas? And I mean, I just think about some of the fish passages and all of the work that goes into streams and the like. And that just feels like it's not just seeded lands. It's the areas where there's a really important investment in salmon and habitat.
So, those areas are not specifically identified. We have policies calling out, we have a specific objective for protection of cultural resources in support of enduring tribal traditions. This concept is also carried out in Objective or in Goal Five regarding building resiliency to the effects of climate change. So, to answer your question, not specifically called out geographically, but conceptually.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Sure. Since January 22nd, 1855, I think we're ecstatic to be able, if this passes, to be able to be on the comprehensive plan. I know it's taken a lot, a lot of work. You know, it's a lot of things that we have signed away that we, of course, didn't have a choice to, but we did. And I think the three of us are very happy to be on it. At least, we're going in the right direction. So, I thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheldon. I think we all kind of agree and feel for you and with you. Any other discussion at this time? In a way, I'd love to see where this is going to go, but I think it's too early. We just have to go step by step and work together. Any other thoughts at this time? Do I hear a motion?
A motion to approve the tribal coordination element.
Moved by Commissioner Sheldon to approve the tribal coordination element. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Commissioner Brown seconds. Any discussion?
Amendment?
You have an amendment? Okay, we have, before we vote on the main motion, we have an amendment to the main motion. Commissioner Sheldon?
Everyone understands here that I'm a planning commissioner for the tribe, have been for some time. And we've seen this, the proposal and everything else. There were two things that were in it when I last saw it and aren't there now. I don't know how you want me to proceed, but I really think they should be in there. We did talk about approving the peer. And I'd like to make one of my motions to acknowledge tribal jurisdiction to Thai lands within the reservation boundaries and defer to the applicable tribal law and policy on those lands.
David, do you want to comment on that? Are we getting into legal territory?
So, the, what you're, the document, I think that you were referencing with that included in it, we have been working collaboratively with the planning staff of the Tulalip tribes to develop this element. Those two policies were proposed for inclusion by the Tulalip tribes' planning staff, and we received advisement from our legal counsel that those policies exceeded the scope of this element.
You know what I was hoping to hear here is that we could tweak the proposed amendment to say, seek a way to continue to work, some, something that gives us some direction without being, without crossing that threshold into areas where we don't have jurisdiction or authority. I mean, it's, it's an interest that's being raised.
It is. Maybe to maybe add at the end of it, two years? I would think in two years, I'd rather not have it just disappear. And for the record, and just say to work, work on this within two years.
You mean, bring it back for discussion?
No, that they will work, staff will work on this for, to work on the wording in the next two years.
Yeah, just, just, so our response is, we've always viewed this element as a starting point, not an ending point in our relations with our tribes. And we certainly acknowledge that there are topics which have not been included in this element, which, which will be conversations in the future. So, I think from an implementation standpoint, it's certainly within the commission's purview. If that's the way you want to frame that motion, I just want to acknowledge that, that we don't see this as an end with the adoption of this. We see this really as a, as a continuation of the converse, the journey that we've been on.
Can you read that again, please, and so it can be entered into the record? I'm not exactly sure where we're crossing what line.
The, oh, not going to read my paper. Now, acknowledgement, tribal jurisdiction on Thai lands within the reservation boundaries deferred to the applicable tribal law and policy on those lands.
I'm so sorry, Commissioner Sheldon, and you do repeat that a little bit louder and a little bit slower.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Acknowledgement, tribal jurisdiction on travel, on Thai lands within the reservation boundaries and deferred to the applicable tribal law and policy on those lands.
How about if acknowledge turned into interest in future discussions concerning, so we're not acknowledging something, that's the concern I'd have, is if we don't have that kind of authority, but we could encourage future discussions? Would that be sufficient?
Tidal.
Right, tidal, tidal. But we would remove acknowledge, Ray, if that's okay with you?
So sorry, too many voices. One more time.
T-I-D-A-L.
So, Ray, if we move to main motion to encourage, is that going to be okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. A secondary motion by Commissioner Sheldon to encourage future discussion of tribal jurisdiction on tidal lands within the reservation boundaries and defer to applicable tribal law was made by Commissioner Sheldon, seconded by...
No one yet. I don't think anyone seconded it.
It's Commissioner Campbell again.
I'd be happy to. Okay, so we have a secondary motion before we move back to the main motion. And that is encourage future discussion of tribal jurisdiction on tidal lands within the reservation boundaries, defer to applicable tribal law. It's made by Commissioner Sheldon, seconded by Commissioner Campbell. Any discussion on that motion? That's, that's a secondary motion. Seen, seen, go ahead.
When I read it, when it came to like legal stuff, I don't know if we should kind of take that extra step to tell the county to defer to tribal laws versus just telling them to coordinate, and then the county and the tribes can kind of figure that out. Would be my feedback when I read that.
About refer instead of defer? This is up to Commissioner Sheldon, too. It's his motion, but refer? Okay, we got it okay on that. Thank you, Commissioner Bastide. Right now, we have a secondary motion to encourage future discussion of tribal jurisdiction on tidal lands within the reservation boundaries and refer to applicable tribal law made by Commissioner Sheldon, seconded by Commissioner Campbell. Any discussion? Taylor, go ahead and take the vote on the amendment.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash?
Yes. Okay, so the amendment passes unanimously, and now we return back to the main motion.
I have another motion.
Another amendment? Okay. Second amendment?
Acknowledge tribal jurisdiction over waters, including groundwater, surface water, and public water, this is the big word, systems within the reservation boundaries and defer to applicable to tribal law and policy over such waters.
Second motion amendment?
Okay.
Or he, she was going to give some, yeah.
Taylor is pulling up the language from your email. It'll make it a little easier to cut base like we did with Vice Chair Campbell's.
Yeah, we'll get that when the time comes. It's the second amendment.
So, Commissioner Sheldon, you're kind of, do you want to replicate sort of the language on the first one for the second one, for the waters on tribal lands? Is that kind of, do you want to stay consistent with the, the way the original one was phrased?
Sure.
Leave it to my sense of humor to call it watering it down.
And refer to applicable, yeah.
And this is going to be a second, secondary motion, kind of wordy, but that's what it is.
You can just write Campbell.
Secondary motion. I think we're getting close here. Okay, before us, we have a secondary, second secondary motion to amend made by Commissioner Sheldon to encourage future discussion of tribal jurisdiction over waters, including groundwater, surface water, and public water distribution systems within the reservation boundaries and refer to applicable tribal law and policy over such waters seconded by Commissioner Commissioner Campbell, okay? So, now we have a second secondary motion. Any discussion? Taylor?
I don't have anything to discuss.
Have something.
Yes, Commissioner Bastide.
I guess when I read this, when I hear, see groundwater, public water distribution systems, the, and just surface water, also like wetlands and streams, I think of the state and that the state is the one who has, you know, jurisdictions over streams, wetlands. And then, you know, Snohomish County doesn't have public water. That would be, you know, PUD or other, you know, water providers in the area. So, I don't really know if this necessarily falls under the county's requirements as I read it.
I think what you're touching on here is a conversation that is long-running over tribal jurisdiction. And there's a strong, there's strong feelings there. And the state and the tribes all around the state are always going around and around about this stuff. And I, I don't know that we're going to settle anything tonight, but I do think we've made a great move by continuing the discussion because there's nothing wrong with that. And, and these are still sensitive subjects for the tribes. So, I wouldn't want to try to, to remove any of it as long as we're not being legally bonding ourselves here with our conversation. Encouraging is, is a healthy way to do it. And, 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 you know, let's, we can stand back and watch, but we're not going to be in the middle of those conversations. And if we have a tribal member who's a member of the commission at the same time, good for us. And that person's recommending we do things, and he's willing to be flexible with us. And so, I'd say we've got good language here. We're not, we're not trying to nail anything down. We're saying this is still important to the tribe. You okay with that, Commissioner Bastide? Okay.
I just, just one comment. David, I think you were here, 2016, when we brought this the first time. And the tribe, not the tribal, but the tribal and the county attorney agreed to it first time. And this room was just full and was full of not just happiness. And we, I scratched my head as it was approved once. All of a sudden, we go back, and here we are, 2023, and they still can't get agreed to it. I, you know, the first time was okay. I hope this will be work and go forward. So, this is done and take care of in my lifetime. But thank you.
Keep the discussion going. Exactly. Any other discussion at this time on this motion, the second motion? Second, second motion. Okay, Taylor, go ahead and take the vote.
I have, just a quick second on this order. Maybe can we vote possibly on the two amendments and the main motion all at once in this case?
Well, where we're at right now is we have a main motion. The sec, the first secondary motion was already approved. So, now we're asking to approve the second secondary motion. And then we'd go back to the main motion and approve that. So, we've already got an approved-
There isn't a way to combine them instead of-
Well, we're, we're already making progress here. The secondary motion's already approved. So, we just said we're one vote away from the second, secondary motion, then we go back to the main motion. It's, it's bureaucratic, but it works. You know? I mean, we've already got the vote in, on record. So, let's do the second vote, and then we'll finish it up. So, water issues, it's before us here. Okay, go ahead and call the roll, Taylor.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes. Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Very good. The second secondary motion is now approved along with the first second motion. And we go to the original main motion as amended. And we're, unless there's discussion and I'm willing to take that, let's go ahead and take a vote on the main motion as, as amended.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
So we have, uh, tribal coordination as amended passed unanimously. And thanks to, uh, Snohomish County leadership for allowing this to come on to the comprehensive plan. And to our member on the planning commission who's been flexible and still dogmatic about what he wants to have happen, you know, good for you.
David, just fifty-three hundred of us are appreciated. All the work you guys have done.
No, and thank you to the commission and, and certainly thank you to you, Commissioner Sheldon, for all your work in creating the momentum to push this forward. This as, just as a reminder, um, the commission may recall, we held a joint meeting with the Tulalip Planning Commission, and it was following that meeting that we received the, the, the request from Tulalip tribes to restart this work. So.
Good. I think the key word operative word is momentum. That's great. Now we have a big one ahead of us. Introduction and appendices. What do we do with that?
All right.
Yeah, so you got one more, you got one more to go, and then we do have that final motion here. So maybe we, I'll make this quick, um, and maybe just do this really quick. So we do have the introduction to the comprehensive plan. We do have a series and sees, uh, that includes the glossary. You heard some of the appendices, uh, attached to different, um, uh, uh, elements. Um, appendices are really just an opportunity to stick stash some stuff that really doesn't belong in the narrative, uh, or in the policies. Uh, the introduction, um, you got briefed on way back in March. The highlight of that is the new vision statement, uh, that had not been updated uh, essentially since the original adoption of the comprehensive plan in nineteen ninety-five. The vision statement does bring in a considerable amount of, of, uh, the conversations are on equity, uh, diversity and inclusion. Uh, and so that really highlights, uh, the introduction. But there are a number of other changes to the introduction that, that, uh, account for the shift from the general policy plan that we currently operate under to a comprehensive plan made up of a series of elements which the commission has made recommendations on here, uh, this evening. So, uh, if there are any questions, uh, on specifics of the introduction, I'll just leave it there.
No need for a vote?
No, you didn't. We would like you to take a vote and, but you can do a vote.
Can we move the whole thing?
You can move the whole thing. Um, you don't need to move each part. You can just move.
What do I say? I moved the whole thing? Is that the operative language?
I would suggest that you move the introduction and, and associated appendices.
There we go. I move that we move the introduction and associated appendices.
Commissioner Campbell, okay, Commissioner Campbell. All right, Commissioner, you got it in this time. Commissioner Campbell moves to accept the introduction and dependencies as written, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? This is your last chance.
We got half hour.
Okay, seeing no discussion, Taylor, please, when you're done there, take the vote. Okay, a motion to approve introduction associated dependencies was made by Commissioner Campbell, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Taylor, please take the vote.
Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yep.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
Unanimously approved introduction and appendices by planning commission and staff. I can't thank everybody enough for the work that's gone in. Ten months of listening and reading and, or in the briefings. Go ahead, David.
Yep. So we do have a final motion. Taylor, can you pull that up?
Yep.
Thing that I had from yesterday and, uh, put that on there, up there.
Do you want the PowerPoint or just the language? Cause I do have the.
Yeah, just the language from that one slide. You could just cut and paste that if you want to put that up on the screen.
I just want to give a compliment to Taylor for all the work you're having to do up there and pulling from different documents. Yeah, this is like a lot to do. I'm admiring it.
Patience and having to repeat everything.
Yeah, and if I could, while she's putting, if I could just have a, have a, a moment to, to, to thank, um, not only the staff who have joined for the last two nights, uh, both in person and online, who have worked really, really hard on this project for quite a while. And I also want to thank the planning commissioners as well. I know that we put you through the wringer, um, starting earlier this year with, uh, a lot of briefings each month. Uh, we held the special meeting, uh, with an open house. Uh, we put you through the wringer here for two nights that went a little long. Apologies that the room got cold. It seemed like after seven o'clock. Um, but I want to thank you as well for all your efforts and, and input in this. Um, and we'll be taking your recommendations, turning them into ordinances and forwarding up to the council, uh, this coming spring. So really want to thank you for all your hard work, um, here on this update as well.
Thanks, David. You know, we've been through, uh, as I said, ten months, and it's been a lot of work by everybody, a lot of effort, a lot of commitment. Would there be an interest, I'd, something I'd love to see before we adjourn is around Rob and from each of you to talk about your perspective on this. Could just be for a couple of seconds. Carl, do you want to start? Just toss out what you've seen as a new member.
Yeah. Motion to instruct staff.
I'll move first, uh, to instruct staff to compile all of our amendments into final documents. And one, to adjust comprehensive plan elements to match our recommended land use alternatives and to make necessary changes. Ensure internal consistency between individual elements was made by commish, oh, period. I second.
Severs.
I forgot that you asked for that, David. Very good that you remembered.
Jumping.
Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. Go ahead, Taylor.
Commissioner Severs?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Yes.
Commissioner Namela?
Yes.
Chair Larson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yep.
Commissioner Bastide?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ash?
Yes.
Very good. Motion, uh, passes unanimously. Would anyone like to make a comment on what we've been through these last ten months? And if not, that's fine. We can move right to adjourn. Anybody want to make a comment?
Thank you.
That's a good one.
Thank you, all the staff and everyone and.
Okay.
Great work.
Yep, thanks. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we see each other next January? Is that it?
Yeah.